And my cell phone. Good morning, this is a. This is Wednesday, May nineteen, this is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Persian County Board of Commissioners, I'll call this meeting to order. And our first item in business is the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have approval of minutes for four twenty-one and five five, May five.
I have one. Just one, I didn't get the main fifth one.
Oh, you didn't get the main fifth one, so I have. I don't know, I guess a correction on the twenty-first one, under TV. Where it's, it was for the out of town travel, it's the twentieth to the twenty-third, not just the twenty-third. Maybe probably not a big deal, but.
Twenty-three to twenty-four.
Yeah.
So I didn't have any.
I have nothing.
So I'll make the motion to approve the April twenty-first, twenty twenty-one minutes with the travel dates amended. And also again.
The motion and a second, all those in favor? I have motion passed. I begin what? Public, no, little bit of public comments and discussion, no action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda. Until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken, public commentary will generally be limited to three minutes per person. Since there's no public, oh, there is one public here. Kinda, hi, Justin, anybody on Zoom? Okay. Seeing that number three, review of all agenda items to determine if any do or do not impose a direct. And significant economic burden on the business or directly restrict the formation, operation, or expansion of the business.
I didn't see anything.
I didn't either.
So I'll make a motion to that event.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in paper, aye, motion passed. So, road department.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you guys?
Great.
Usually at the road department, busy, busy.
Yeah.
Me, myself, I've been working on a permit with NDF for surface area disturbance, probably talk about that some more in your landfill, spraying weeds. We rent the weed tractor some, my new hire did, I've rented a little bit, but I, with that bridge being closed, I forgot about marker laying. And they were growing good out there when I realized it, anyhow, we fixed that. We, oh, I met with Inex, the mining company that's out by Willow Creek, they're fixing to go back to work. So we have an road agreement with them, part of the agreement is a mutual inspection of Willow Creek Road, so we went and did that. Oh, it wasn't bad, the road's in pretty good shape, they, they did, they bladed up the canyon dry, so it was, I let them know that that's not gonna work. They need to get that wet, but anyhow, fortunately, mother nature took care of that, I believe, I went up there and verified that, but anyways, we got that worked out, and they are. In the process of improving Willow Creek Road to allow them to haul ore out of there without damaging the road, so they're hauling gravel on that road.
Did you just bring the gravel up?
Mm-hmm, put, make it thicker, add some pit run down, just what it needs, they were, they wanted to just go ahead and start hauling. And then they were gonna improve the road up the canyon, and I says, no, that's not gonna work, because they wanna haul it clear to the pavement. And the whole road needs to be improved to. Either A handle a bunch of, but over the road trucks, or they, they wanna use mining trucks, and that, that's in the agreement, probably gonna let them do that. But I told them they need to improve the road first, so and, they're on the hook for, if they destroy it, they have to fix it, and they have a bond, they put the bond.
Yeah.
So anyhow, worked through that, they're working on the roads, it's a pretty good deal, I believe, it's gonna be good. The, we started the Coyote Creek project with Mr. Hendricks, moving the road, moving the. Bryce can speak to that too, it was an RS two four seven seven, but unfortunately went through Kendrick's, right through his corrals, he, he wanted, wanted it to go around, and he gave up twenty feet of road to do that, so we're helping with that. We're about halfway done with the road, it's gonna be a lot better road than it was, looks really good, and then he asked us to help him. We had to tear his corrals down, move the road into where his corrals were, so we helped him with that, and we're helping him put it back up, and so that's what we're doing, and then they're gonna move another. About a mile of fence, they're gonna do that part of it, barbed wire fence, anyhow, so I think it's gonna work good, so it's a good deal for the, for the public, they can have a nice road forever. It's a lot better than it was, so anyhow, that's part of what I did, we went and purchased the chip spreader, it stayed per se, I had it in the budget for, I don't know, a few years in a row, we find, they finally had one, so. I think I had, forgive me for not remembering, thirty, thirty-five thousand. Air mark for one, and we ended up getting a really nice one from the state for twenty-five hundred bucks, so.
Well.
We're very. Yeah, so it has three hundred dollars on it, nineteen ninety-seven, and the original purchase price, since there was ninety thousand dollars, just under ninety thousand, so hopefully, it's gonna, it's a good deal. And it will be for a long, long time to come, so that's good. Also, I was up in Grass Valley, we had, we had a bit of a failure, one of our chip seals up there, just one, part of one road, part of muddy road, and I had talked to the contractor, oh, I don't know, months ago, we. But we were unable to hook up, anyhow, we hooked up, we looked at it, guys looking into that, I don't know if we get any relief out of that, but I wanted to know that, I think we did our job, I don't, I don't know.
Is it just oil or?
The chips didn't stick, so it looks.
Just didn't stick?
Yeah, big stripes and stuff, but anyways, we're working on that too, so. The guys, Jerry and Robert, they, they were blading Callahan Road out of Bentley, we, we moved on from that to start Coyote Creek, but before that also, they. We re-bladed Kyle Hot Springs, so got it good and wet, compacted, and then they, both he and Jerry had been working on Coyote Creek. And the rest of the guys, well, not the rest, Jacob, Jacob's been really, really good to, good, good worker.
Good.
To make a long story short, he went and got his permit, so we're gonna get him driving, but very happy to have that kid, he's, he's gonna work out really fine, I hope he sticks around.
Yeah.
He's not scared to do anything, we like that at the road shop, that's, that's how we roll, so. He, well, I don't need to get into details, but he's helped us out a lot, he's been involved in a little bit of everything last couple weeks. And anyhow, the rest of the crew, they're out by Sea Punch. Between Limbo Ranch and their other ranch out there, is a road they use a lot in it, there was some big holes in it, so we've been working on that for about a week, we got, I think today and tomorrow, and then we got, they're gonna move and. Another road that we do out that way that they used to get their hay out washed out over the weekend, so we're gonna go fix that, we'll start that tomorrow. Anyways, but yeah, they're doing a pretty important project out there, went pretty good, having to haul water about forty miles, but they're making it work, so. Appreciate it with that, oh, and I gotta add the Kevin, Gavin, Bill, they laid it up ragged top. In, before we headed out there and went over it the other day, that's the best it's ever looked, so.
That rain was really a good rain.
Oh, gosh, it was awesome.
Of course, that hurt it a little bit, it's not so great now, so I wanna run down it too, but not, nothing like to trade a few roads, anyhow, that's pretty much all I have.
For roads. For roads, and landfill, I know there's a, a lot going on there.
Yeah, they, they were able to burn the burnt pile up in our landfill over the weekends, so that's good, they've been covering tires. And then we're working on the surface area disturbance permit, it's gonna, we're gonna end up paying another thousand bucks every five years, so it's two thousand instead of one thousand. We've been getting away with, with claiming only five acres of disturbance up there, and the senior guy at NDF took a look at it with the Google Earth image, and he's saying, no, that's not gonna work. I don't know, I can't explain how we got away with five acres.
Well.
Went back and forth with him a little bit, it, it doesn't sound like it's, we're between twenty and a hundred, and that's that, so I don't use arguing with them, I've gotta submit a new map and stuff, I'm working on that. Never done it before, so that's. Stan Tech is probably gonna end up helping me, between Stan Tech and James and myself and Mitch, we'll get that done and give her permit back. I think we've got a little bit of wiggle time, Karen. Anyhow, we're working on that, that's a big deal. And I, when I was in Grass Valley yesterday, I went by the transfer site. The burn area up there is a complete disaster, those people do not follow the rules whatsoever, it's very disheartening. We need to really take a look at doing a special assessment up there and get somebody up there full time, I don't know what else to do, I'm over it, so we need to, I need to work on that. Whatever we.
Even if you locked them out of there, then they'd go make their own road around.
Really, did them a great favor having that burn area, you know, of course, it's saving us money too, but they, yesterday, there's tree stumps that are not gonna work huge, these are contractors, these are dump truck loads. There's garbage throughout, and the states right there, it's gotta be clean wood or, or limbs and stuff, no garbage, no plastic, and there's tons of plastic. Additionally, too big concrete, I don't know what they are, but big slabs of concrete.
And they're not gonna burn.
I don't think so.
Yeah, why would you throw them, and it's just total disregard and disrespect, it's just.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know what to say, except I'm exasperated about the situation, I'm sick of it, we've been cleaning it up every two weeks, and we're gonna be up there, it's gonna be a big one, they really hammered us bad, I think it's a contractor, I don't know, I. I don't know.
Be different.
We need to just have a person up there, I believe, and lock it at night, the, the transfer site part of it, the burn area, we'll have to work on that, I'm gonna have to get that fence before we, it'll be secure, but we can look at that too, yeah. Anyhow. And then I guess, I think I'll come back at eleven, we've got to talk about the landfill.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
All that stuff up there.
Yeah, okay. So that's. Okay. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you, thank you very much.
We have a couple minutes before our. Eight forty-five, how long you have a? Come on. Building's angry.
So I spoke to Terran Furma this morning. They're hoping to get out of here within the next two weeks, to at least do their. Patch for the year. To get the pull from this year, and then at the end of the season, we're going to drain it, and they're actually going to fix.
Didn't come in really do, really, they think the patch is gonna.
Yeah, hold for the summer, you know, for the couple of months it will have left. That's. Latest I have on that.
Yeah.
It's been a lot of time still at the cemeteries, replacing drip lines. People keep running over.
Graves.
And graves.
It's awful.
We've put stuff in the way to stop them from running it over, they still run it over. Had a sheep wander into Long Mountain, don't know exactly when, but it was noticed on Monday. And it passed, so I asked Dan if he could grab somebody with a loader and scoop that up for us, because it had already started to bloat. So they hauled that up out of there, but again, we're having major issues with. Spring for lines and people driving through. Supposed to be driving through softball fields, same thing, people breaking my drip lines. Sections of it.
Yeah.
And it's just, you know. It takes us a lot of time to, to refix all that stuff, and it, it is not the monetary of the parts, because that's, it's expensive, but the time to go, to go through, dig it up, replace it. We fixed the leak finally. On the concession stand in that shed, there's zero leaks, through that half inch of rain that we had, we didn't have a drop of water come through. So we put the concession stand mostly back together, I just got finished putting the trim back up inside, and that will be open for. Whomever wants to use it, hopefully, at this point, for the adult making.
Yeah.
I heard something. That it was printed in the paper, that it was like they were kinda downtrodden on how bad the softball fields look. I take offense to that, because myself and Dan's crews have spent a lot of time the last few years, last three years specifically, really fixing that up.
I went out there, I just happened to drive past there, I was looking for turkeys, and those ball fields looked the best.
They're, they're safe like.
They're about this big.
But anyway, the ball fields, like, I thought they looked really good, actually, and I just thought to myself, man, I haven't seen them look as good as they have, so.
I mean, are they pro field quality? No, but are they nice?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Well, the reason this has all come up is because members of the Red Bull there is. And they wanna do some more improvements to the field, and they brought in four truckloads of the red dirt. And I made it clear that our buildings and grounds are short-staffed, so these. People interested in improving these fields are all volunteers that need to work with John, and John's been really gracious right now. The problem is, is.
They're not.
They are, they want parts and everything else, but, but when they're told where they're at and where to pick them up, I mean. The communication really needs to be better with the volunteers and the people that wanna make the improvements. And myself, and John. Because. They, and they know if. They're gonna work on it, they're gonna do it right.
Yeah.
And they know that buildings and grounds is way too shorthanded to do anything else, so. Well, and anywhere else, facilities like that, they would be paid to use them.
Oh, I'm, I'm, exactly, yeah.
So I am, I am pretty much trying to. Make the transition between the volunteers and John as smooth as I can, although. When the volunteers forget to lock the facilities, and John asked me to check on them, and then I had a water meeting, and I forget everything else. They didn't get locked, so Bruce went out and locked them, but now I have somebody that drives by there twice or three times a day, so he's gonna check and make sure the gates are always locked.
Which, you know, these are supposed to be adults.
Yeah.
Another good side note is we have our camera systems are up and running out there, so any misbehaviors that do happen. At least to the building itself, I'll be able to see in the conics where the equipment, or most of the equipment being stored is visible. Hopefully, we won't have to have those issues, but they are up and running. And this is when everybody would be aware. Speaking of cameras, we had several power bumps, and I spoke to each one of the commissioners individually last week. That it blew our, one of our DVRs up, the brownouts, whatever you wanna call it, just the constant on and offs have shorted out one of the DVRs. To replace that DVR. Is eleven thousand six hundred twenty-two dollars. It's, it's a, I don't know how we can fix in the energy.
Well, it's not their fault, it's mother nature.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm saying, there's nothing, I mean, I've talked to Bruce Hudson about. Trying to add some power conditioners to this building at some point, and that's gonna be in the works when we get back to rewiring the building.
Yeah. Did it hurt anything else in the building?
I'm not sure what else is, what else is damaged, I haven't heard anything else, I, I know that it caused an issue with the airport cameras, a bit. But electronics aren't meant to kind of slam the door on and off, it's very hard to use it with it, even with surge detectors or battery backups, it's still very hard when they, and Justin can attest to this, it's just. It's an unfortunate thing, and I didn't really have a chance to get this on, you know, on, on an agenda item to, to replace, because it kinda happened after all that was going on. I took it in, this, it had it, tried to have repaired, it's just beyond repaired. And put it back in, it just keeps turning itself on, it'll, it'll stay on for a little bit, then turn itself off, it's just, there's something. Beyond our, beyond anything that we can repair. So I asked, as an emergency, if we can get this replaced, so we have our cameras.
So where do we get the money?
I'm not sure.
Rain?
How much was it again?
Eleven thousand six hundred twenty-two dollars and ten cents.
And where is the location?
Here in the courthouse.
Well, we still have a little bit left in the emergency light item in the building fund, but I will say that if we take eleven thousand out there, we have nothing left until the end of the year, no.
I believe it's the special, but without the recorder, the cameras are.
Well, it's a security issue.
We could split apart John out of your fire security expenses, because you still have fourteen thousand.
Okay. Okay.
So have maybe split half the building fund and half out of the security line item in this building's ground special.
So Bryce, can we declare this an emergency repair?
Yeah.
And take action.
Okay, I'm just gonna say we'll have to wait, if we can, then.
So I'll make a motion that we approve replacing the camera DVR for eleven thousand six hundred twenty-two dollars and ten cents. That half comes out of the building, building the ground fund, and half out of the capital improvements, and that we declare this an emergency item due to safety concerns.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, all those in paper, aye, motion passed.
On to something a little less.
Yeah.
Sorry, cemeteries are, I'm still waiting on NDF to get up to Unionville. Tim's gonna go up there, he's gonna spray the weeds out, I haven't been up there personally in a couple weeks, probably a couple months now, but. I don't know how bad the weeds are, he said last time he seen them, they weren't that bad, but I do have NDF on, I'm on their list to get things, they only have two working crews right now at that camp that's supposed to have ten. We're working on it. So if there's any complaints, I'll deal with it, but we're doing the best we can.
So we can. Well, and then with the rain, I mean, the weeds just pick off, I mean, might have already grown tremendously.
Any other questions or anything requests?
No, thank you.
Good job. Still have, still no applicants.
Okay, going back to item number four, which is an eighty-five, eight, eight forty-five public carry ring. First item is fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two proposed budget for Persian County, Persian County TV district and the town of.
Okay, so I'll just briefly give you updates on what I need to change from the tentative budget to the final. We got some state things for the health nurse and for CPS with an increase, that total's gonna be about eleven thousand five hundred dollars. Sean Burke has made me aware of the EMPG grant, the match that we used to make for twelve five is going up to twenty-four one sixty. So that's an increase of eleven thousand six hundred and sixty dollars in the general fund. Ag extension, Steve Foster has requested twenty-five hundred or a little bit more to be added. Into the remittance to other governments to reimburse for the fuel usage when he uses it, since he won't have a county or a corporate vehicle anymore. We had kinda reduced that with the understanding that he was getting that vehicle, but now that's gone by the wayside. The senior center with that approval, you made it last meeting to put that back to two volunteer bus drivers, there actually is a decrease of a thousand twenty-seven dollars there. In the sheriff's department, we got a change from workman's comp after a packed audit, and they are now changing and combining workman's comp in heart lung all into one item. That's gonna have an overall increase to the budget of almost twelve thousand dollars. Judge Shirley has also made a couple changes in the eleven judicial, after meeting with Bryce and myself and him, he's removing that. Indigent defense that he put in the budget, because he feels that's a state that needs to pay for that, so that's a decrease of ninety-five thousand five hundred dollars. And then at the same time, he is increasing. The pre-trial position, which is in his department thirty by ten percent, but that's no increase to Persian County, because Lander County is going to flip that ten percent increase. And that's basically all the changes that I've made and are aware of, other than the other item on here to discuss about the ag extension wage budget.
So on that one, the position is half time?
The position is half time right now, you, Steve had asked to bump it up to full time, which I did in the tentative, and then you guys put it on freeze or froze it or whatever. I need clarification, because I would like to see it, either it's half time or it's full time.
And I feel it's a half time position.
And I think it's a full time position.
And I talked to Holly Gatski from Cooperative Extension, and based on the criteria that UNR uses, which is based on population and travel. And other duties, they're, they're in agreement that it's a half time position.
Well, and I also have. Well, and I also have had conversations with that lady and she is also stipulating that several counties are having to reduce their positions. It's not just Pershing, it's several of the counties.
And then in the future, if that position, I asked her, how did it become a county position versus like the four H and everything else? And she said that was started so many years ago, nobody really understands. But if the positions were to be open again at any county, that she would be pushing for them to be UNR positions. Because that way it's clear who they report to, because sometimes there is a conflict if they're a county position. Sometimes they, they go by the county rules and not the UNR rules, or they're trying to do both and there are issues. So whether that'll happen in the future, I don't know, but that's something that she would push for. But I'm of the firm belief that this is, I have time.
Well, and one other thing that I would like to mention is the approval of the tax resolution that we always do at this time for A extension. Please remember, we have reduced that to half of what we normally allot for the A extension so that we could move more money to help the general fund.
And if we make this a full time position, it's going to hurt that in the long run.
Correct.
And so that's why, for a couple of reasons, I think it should be half time.
Okay, so the first part there is we have approval of fiscal year, fiscal year for, uh, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, generally budget.
So I'll make that motion that we go ahead and approve, uh, the tentative budgets. And make the, um, adjustments.
I'll second.
The motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. And then the third part of that is review of cooperative extension salary wage.
You actually have to do your tax resolution next too.
Oh.
Number is twenty-one dash zero five zero.
Zero five.
Zero six.
Zero six, thank you. I'll make a motion that we go ahead and approve the resolution twenty-one dash oh five oh six um, for the tax rate of cooperative extension, reducing it to half of what it was previously.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Right, motion passed.
And on the third one, I'll make the motion that the position for cooperative extension is a half time position and make the adjustments of salary and wage, um, on the budget accordingly.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that brings us up to Persian County Fire and Ambulance. I don't see anybody in here other than for number six, we have, uh, fire inspection. Mike, do you have anything to?
Yeah, I do, I thought Russell's.
Not a way till he, if he shows up?
Yes.
Okay. So we can, we can get these other first ones out, then we'll go back into IT department and economic development. Uh, so we don't have any, uh, safety.
Um, there's, Cheryl's not on the call, she, yeah, there's nothing really to update on.
Emergency operations, Sean is in Austin. I told him, have a good time in the big city. So I have his reports I can read. Uh, the first one up is Grass Valley Fire Department. Uh, their light brush truck remains at, at the Ford dealership in Wannemuck up for repairs. This unit has had intermittent problems for two years and has been in for troubleshooting and repairs several times. This, uh, this time it replaced the ECM and associated wiring. Anyway, it's in there for repairs and we're, and they're hoping that that does fix it. We have, uh, one new member bringing out their roster to fifteen of eighteen. Uh, training program, this is the interesting part. Training po- program is going very well this year. We are emphasizing getting their firefighter fighter firefighter ones done. Uh, and expect that all members will complete the, right, AHG or AHJ firefighter one program, which closely mirrors the state of, the state fire marshals program. The only difference is we don't, uh, take their written test. They also have, uh, four of their members taking the EMR class, uh, which Lander County EMS is sponsoring for Grass Valley and Wright Batch. The first class was held last Saturday. The course will run every Saturday until the twelfth of June. He's working on closing out the budget for, for this fiscal year. And he hasn't received any response from Mike Heidemann regarding our last chief's meeting. So not sure what's going on there. Emergency management, I'm gonna go just go through all of them, good? Emergency management, all grants for, uh, the next fiscal year have been submitted to the state. We are starting to see more come in, in from this past year's grants, which have been delayed due to COVID, state, uh, state workers, uh, working at home. Uh, he also expects to see the fifty thousand dollar from the state health to augment the COVID vac- vaccination efforts. Uh, expect that to, to, to arrive in the next month or so. Uh, we have ramped down on COVID vaccinations and now rely on the county health nurse to do vaccinations at her clinic in Love Lock. Uh, he would like to discuss the commission's desires for completing the county Emergency Operations Center. We have tentatively identified one of the rooms at the Love Lock Community Center. And he has requested grant funding to outfit it with computers, TVs, cables, file cabinets, et cetera. Uh, he needs to confirm that he's, that he's, uh, I am cleared to proceed moving the project toward completion. Perhaps this could become beyond the next agenda. Grass Valley Advisory, our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, May twenty-fourth. I think that's.
Be out of town and it would be my turn.
Um, and I guess that means me.
I'll be the next two.
Okay. Okay, so I'll, I'll handle that one. And then they had tentatively scheduled June twenty-six for a town hall meeting. And they're going to reschedule or cancel that uh, for board members having conflicts. Um, care's funding, the fire department has received the fire turnouts purchased with the first transfer of care's funding. Uh, for the next round, he strongly recommends the county consider funding a new ambulance for Love Lock and medical response units for Grass Valley and Hemley. Not sure what Wright Batch needs or wants, but he will, uh, work with them to see what they need. Uh, we can fund all these multiple use units with the amount of funding under consideration. This will definitely fix Grass Valley's brush truck problem. I do believe that these units fall well within the scope of, of work that's intended for CARES Act funding. And would subsequently reduce future funding requirements for, for all the departments. That's all.
Can you send me Sean's update?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just forward that to you. I can do that.
So I make sure I.
Now, what is my agenda? Okay, so that handles Sean's reports, IT department.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So to get my department update, um, that then, I provided you with an update on the status of the various projects that I've been working on. Very, very busy with that.
That's great work and I like how you did it so that it's easy for us to understand.
Um, we're, we're very close on uh, the library and the annex. So once, once we close those two out, we'll be moving on to um, the courthouse and the sheriff's office. And then we'll be doing, we'll be doing the admin building last, actually potentially the most complicated. I will be here this weekend with, uh, the installers from SEC com to finish out the, the, uh, physical wiring of this building. Uh, so I will be with them all over uh, trying to get that finished out. We've still got wiring upstairs, you've got a cabinet to, uh, for equipment in the justice court clerk's room that needs to be installed so that it's not all just sitting on the shelf out in the open. But we should be finishing that this afternoon, uh, this weekend. So the, and then as far as other department, non-project activities, it's been mainly just working on those projects and coordinating between vendors. Um, also, uh, talking with potential future vendors, some of which you'll talk to today, they're they're behind, a lot more behind me, so, um, yeah, uh, working on planning for better internet to support non-only day-to-day activities, but the telephone system as well. Um, and, uh, Karen and I have been discussing, we're gonna have that department tentatively scheduled it for the, for Monday, the twenty-fourth. Monday. So that is my department report. Any questions about that?
Not about that.
Okay.
About the rest, yes.
Okay. So the other, the other item that I have um, under my department is proposals that I have, uh, been trying to, to get together for, uh, better internet service for the county. Um, at this point, I have received two proposals. I'm expecting at least two more. A lot of, a lot of it is dependent on, um, where, what happens, what comes out of, uh, this item and the item under the CDA.
Um, so AT&T is the other one?
AT&T is one of them.
And the other one?
ATP.
Okay.
Is possible. Um, so uh, for, for, for all the, for all the vendors, potential vendors, I set basically the following thresholds. Um, between, between the, the main four buildings in Love Lock, so the courthouse, the admin building, the annex building and the sheriff's office. Um, this primarily, this will affect, to start with, and will spread out further down the road as, as budget and time allows. Um, the connectivity between the buildings, so from, so from the buildings to the hub of the network, which will be at the sheriff's office, has to have a, a, a certain amount of that. And I set that minimum threshold at fifty megabits up and down. We don't have, we, um, at the, at an individual building, we don't have a lot of traffic that, that has to support it. So, so especially once we get the phones and the fifty, the fifty will su- will support all of that. From the hub to the public internet, I specified a minimum threshold of a hundred megabits both ways. So that should, um, that should act, that should support the amount of traffic that we pass on a day-to-day basis to the public internet. Um, or through the public internet to other services like the state that, uh, entities like the state provides. Um, so that's, those, those are the comparisons that, um, I'm, I've been basing these on.
So what you wanted was a minimum of a hundred?
Right.
Right. And what, what is at each place now?
Uh, we top out at eighteen down and, well, no, actually we top out at twenty by twenty at the sheriff's office. We have eighteen down and three up at the admin building.
No wonder it's so slow.
We have, and then, um, for the district attorney's office and basically the entire downstairs of the courthouse, they each have their own eight, but, nine and eight, six, six by like one.
It's what?
Six by one. So this will be a substantial
improvement.
That even, even, even at the minimums I've, I've asked for, it'll be a substantial improvement over what we have. Um, part, part, uh, part of it will be, instead of, and this, this will be true of phones, uh, phones as well. It'll be taking the charges at each department is taken care of for their, their internet. And basically moving around or into one umbrella for the county. Um, all, all of the proposals we're gonna see are gonna have some, some, um, upfront, or some non, some charge for, 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 for setup, for equipment and, uh, you know, that. Um, so to just kind of go over the proposals we've gotten so far. The first one is from Skyfire and here if you have any questions about it. Um, they have, they're, they're proposing a, um, high-speed wireless solution. They, uh, essentially, uh, it'll be a managed network, um, between our building stuff, so we'll be, we'll on that part of the network, we will be the only ones on. Um, and it's basically as, as fast as you can get wireless to go these days without, um, without stepping into either land, land, land-based solutions or, um, point-to-point microwave. Um, and that's what that, that's what the sixty gigahertz, uh, connection that's talking about is that's, that's the, that's the connections between the spokes to the hub. And then from the hub to the internet, a hundred, a hundred by hundred symmetrical, so we can go, we can go down and up at, at that speed. Um, so the one time, the one time toll to, to purchase and install the equipment uh, comes to just shy of sixty-five hundred dollars. And then our monthly recur, our monthly recurring for, to maintain the managed network and the connection to the public internet is one thousand two hundred and ninety-six. And that would, that would, that would take care of all four buildings. Uh, the other, the other proposal I received in, um, is from NNS. Um, they're, they're, they, they provided a similar setup. They provided a few more options as far as internet speed. Um, so on the first page, the first page, uh, from So, on the first page, the first page from NNIS, the quote number zero, 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 one, one, zero. That is the managed network part. So, they, they quoted that at thirty-two hundred to set up the managed network. And then on the second page, a quote, one, 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 are the different internet speeds that they're offering. This, this, this is our month, this would be. I believe this is all monthly recurring.
So, is that, is that total for all four sites, six fifty, the first one?
The first on NNIS?
The managed network?
Um. Eight hundred each site.
That's each site?
Each site.
Okay, so six fifty times four.
Would that be correct?
Oh, no, for, for this, I'm sorry, on the second page.
Yeah.
The hundred by hundred, six fifty, that would come for all sites.
Okay.
That's, that's the one connection from the hub to the internet. It's actually the same thing on the Sky Fiber, there's the one charge for the internet, and then there's separate charges for building to building. So, on the Sky Fiber for the hub to the internet, it's five forty-nine a month. For NNIS hub to the internet, it's six fifteen a month.
I didn't see the five or something.
On the first page of the Sky Fiber quote, it's the second one item, the, the first one that actually has a monthly recurring charge.
Oh, okay.
And then the, the two forty-nine for the next, the next few lines is to go from the building, so like the admin building to the hub at the sheriff's office. That's, that's the private part of the network. And then one, once someone at the admin building gets to the sheriff's office, the connection then goes out to the world.
So, explain to me what a hundred by one hundred is up to one thousand by one thousand?
So, that is, that, that's the speed of the internet connection measured in megabits per second. So, at at a gigabit, which is one, one thousand megabits, which is what the one thousand by one thousand is, you could download a pull these up for specifically for this. You could download a one gigabyte application in a couple of minutes. So, then, so the, the first number is the download speed. So, at, at one thousand megabits, you could download a to give, a one gigabyte file in about two minutes. Add it, and then the second number is the upload speed. Upload the same file.
What does the county currently have?
I know better than twenty by twenty at any of our locations. And all, all, all I'm proposing is a minimum, is a minimum up to one hundred by one hundred. We, we need it, we absolutely need at least probably twenty-five, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be comfortable with anything less than twenty-five up for a new phone system. Because all, all, basically, any new business phone system is gonna be internet-based, it's gonna be voice over. I don't, I don't know what our typical call volume is per day. But based on how, based on how many people we have, I, I don't, I don't, I, I'm not comfortable with anything less than twenty-five by twenty-five. And if we're gonna, if we're gonna have to go through all of that, we might as well set something that's a little future-proof.
Yeah, and I don't have a problem with that, what I'm not understanding is NNIS, that's six fifty, is that total monthly recurring?
That, that.
Hundred by one hundred.
Yeah, right.
And then if we.
And that's just, that's just for the internet from the hub to the world.
Okay.
To the where?
The six fifty would not be times four. But the previous page, that thirty-two hundred, you add that as well.
Okay, that's where I'm trying to get.
Right, so, Sky Fiber provided their entire proposal in one, NNIS split their proposal into two, so.
So, the one page is the one time.
Actually, I've, I'm, I'll have to go back and double-check again, but I'm pretty sure the, the thirty-two hundred as well, because that's a, that's, that's a connection for each building to the hub.
Right, and the other is just the.
That's, that takes, that takes me.
Yeah. So, we're looking at thirty.
These, these, so. So, thirty.
Yeah. So, that's where I was going, so.
And I will, I will double-check to make sure that that is correct. But, yeah. Now, in, in terms of what, so the, the city has just made the change to Sky Fiber. And I, I've heard pretty, I've, I've been hearing that they're pretty happy with that change.
Heidi was really thrilled with it.
The, the and there's advantages and disadvantages to both. Sky, Sky Fiber is new coming into the area, they've, they've got, they've got big plans. And I'm ha, I'm happy to support anyone who wants to come in and improve internet connectivity in our area. So, so, I, I can't, I can't see their service doing anything but improving as time goes on and they get customers. NNIS is already established, an established local business. That we do have, we do have facilities in the county, use the sheriff's offices and the airport uses them. Buildings, grounds, shop uses them. It's gonna be a pretty big change no matter what, I'm still waiting on the proposal for eight, from AT&amp;T. They, they're kind of a bigger shift and harder to turn.
So, and then we need to hear from this other company.
Right, so, so mainly, mainly today is.
So, a three-year contract with NNIS would be one hundred thirty-eight thousand six hundred dollars. Three-year contract with Sky Five would be fifty-three thousand one hundred fifty-one dollars.
So, very limited.
Okay. So, they have been providing internet. And we currently serve Story, Lion County, Eureka County, Lander County, all these counties that have got these fiber and microwave circuits in place and, and we're, we are their provider at all.
Which counties? Which counties was that?
Story County, Lion County, Eureka County, and Lander County.
So, I would guess, I'm sorry to be so ignorant, you use a satellite, right, for this, no? So, how do you do this?
We have multiple fiber talks across the state, fiber optic talks from AT&amp;T, Sentry, we always try to get two providers in every community.
Okay, so if one goes down?
Yeah.
Which is an issue we've had with NNIS, when AT&amp;T goes down.
Right, oh, we're still working with Sentry to find out where we can have access to some of their box in our town, and we integrate the circuits together. We can bid fiber, but we were trying to do something positive to the county also. In fact, I brought in a fiber construction vendor for him to look at down the road. But, it's all backbone with fiber and multiple carriers, and we're, we're hooked together at the switch data center. So, that's where we tie in, basically going all the way to Australia, Eureka, Utah, the whole state of Nevada.
Yeah, so, I mean, right, right now, and that, that will probably change. And even in, in, as soon as in the next five years, the AT&amp;T is going to be backbone for just about anything, but, you know, you've got people like Sky Fiber, you've got people like ATP who are trying to fix that. To, to bring in some alternatives and some redundancy, which will make me sleep easier. So, a lot, a lot of what I presented today is, I may even present for your information, unless you decided that might what I thought already. Like I said, AT&amp;T does owe me a proposal that they're trying to work on. I contact, I checked in with my contact there Monday and haven't heard back.
Well, since ATP is here, I think we should hear from them. And depending, I mean, I, I wouldn't have a problem going forward, because we spend a lot of money right now for our internet.
Yeah.
And it's bad.
We, um, I can, I can actually pull up the numbers, because I have the numbers, I have the numbers, but I believe for what we have right now, just the buildings here in town, we spend about three thousand a month.
How much?
About three thousand a month.
It's a lot of money.
And.
And with AT&amp;T, I, I don't have the, I don't have the NNIS numbers yet, but for AT&amp;T, we top out at eighteen by three.
Yeah.
And that's, that's just our internet, that's not our phone, that's not everything we pay AT&amp;T for. But, yeah, it's, we, we pay quite a bit for something that we don't get much of. And that's, that's the maximum on their business plans that they offer, is the eighteen by three, until you go to their dedicated internet services, which is what you're quoting.
So, I have a question of David, David, sorry. What's involved with the one-time installation?
Basically, lining up, right now, we have a gig of fiber at the Chevron station, we're gonna line up a ten-gig circuit, so if you have a chance to expand the confusion. And we have to put a crane up for Mr. Capital to get new equipment on the Chevron side. And then we would have to have techs go and set this redundant equipment up between, on each one of the buildings to communicate with each other. So, if one goes down, it's still a one wrong fit, so we're gonna do it correctly. So, we, he's probably familiar that we had our text on the roof of this building to figure out how we can serve the other two locations from here, so.
So, it's like a, a dish that you would put up?
Yeah, basically, it looks like the dish is facing the sky by the shoes from one building to the other.
Yeah, okay.
Nobody else is gonna be on that now.
Yeah, which is great.
Yeah.
And then the connect, okay. So, how do an individual person at a computer, do they just use, I mean, is there a cable, cable, there's nothing that comes?
Different that users will have to do.
Okay.
It's, so, the, they, they'll, they'll connect with the, the same cable on their workstation, or as soon as I finish the wifi for their wifi signal, it will go to, it'll go to the data rooms, which, so like the copy room in the admin building, it'll go back there to that switch, and then from, from that room, it goes up to the roof.
Okay.
Out the, the radio.
All right, so is it possible to connect our other county buildings on this?
Eventually, that's the plan, no matter what way we go, that's, that's a plan.
But it has to connect to the hub, a hub somewhere or something, right?
So, the fur, the further away the building is from the hub, a little, a little harder will be, and we're still working, we're still working on the details of that plan. So, I mean, eventually, I want to bring the the buildings, grounds shop, the JPO office, the
Community Center.
The community center, the road department.
Is the airport too far away?
The airport's probably too far away, but there are other ways we can do that.
How far is here?
That's seven miles.
Oh, we have equipment that goes up.
Well, there we go.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, so, yeah.
That would be great.
So, any, anywhere we have employees, I want to bring into this one central network so that we can, we can all have, we can centralize all of our resources, like all of our file storage can be centralized and secured and backed, backed up in one place instead of having to piece along all these other supporting projects.
Well, we could save a lot of money, and as we save the money, we can hook up the other outlying buildings, you know, without a problem, I mean, it's gonna save us a lot, so, but I'd like to hear from ATP.
So, this is the point of the meeting where I say something about the open meeting law, and then you all get mad at me. So, AT&amp;T unfortunately is not on the agenda for a proposal, that doesn't prevent them from providing input to the meeting, but it does prevent the board from taking action or deliberating towards an action in regards to ATT.
So, we, we have to wait to hear from them.
Right, no, you can, the board can hear from them. But the board would not be able to deliberate toward a decision based upon what they say, because they're not agendized, there's only three on there.
Yeah, the Sky Fiber, NNIS, and ATT on this item.
AT&amp;T.
ATT.
Oh, ATP is on the economic, yeah, they're on the next one. So, then put a, put an item on the next agenda to make a decision?
I don't make the open meeting law, I'm sorry, I just interpret it.
Yeah, but I think it's better to have it on the agenda, so it's.
No, 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 it's, if, if the board is going to take action on a matter that ATT, that ATT, is it ATT or ATP?
ATP are the ones that are. AT and T are the ones who still have the proposal.
Okay. But you wanted to hear from ATP on this item?
Yeah, but, so we can't hear on this item from them, because they're not on the agenda.
They can, they're, they're on the agenda for the next.
They can provide public comment, all right, but you can't deliberate towards a decision based upon the comment that they provide. You just have to listen to what they say and thank them, and if they wanna be put on the agenda for an action item going forward relative to this topic, then you can do that.
So, okay, if we were to listen to them and, and public comment, and they just basically say what they can do or whatever, but then we go back and make a decision and don't pick them, then that's an issue, isn't it, in the open meeting law? Yes, that's what I thought.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So. So, we, we should have everybody on one item.
Right.
Yeah.
Because they're separate items, they go with different topics, yes?
Yeah.
So, you have to give the public notice.
Yes.
If they're gonna be doing that, otherwise, the boards could get really crafty with how they make decisions on things.
So, could we could, could the board?
We could make a decision between Sky Fiber, NNIS, and AT&amp;T right now. But without hearing and not even considering ATP, because those are the ones that are listed.
So.
Did you have a question or something? Did you have a question or something?
Yeah, and there, there, so A T P's presentation is on. A bigger community. Uh, more, more connectivity throughout the whole community, yeah. Right. So.
I think what we have to do is we'll, we'll listen to everybody, but to make a decision, we'll have to put it on the next agenda. And just do it that way.
So the way that it's agendized is that A T and T, Sky Fiber and N N I S are here for a discrete topic. To provide internet services to four county buildings. A T P cannot make a presentation for them to provide internet on that discrete issue.
Yes.
Right, they're agendized to provide broadband services and they can make that presentation. And just because they make that presentation, it doesn't prevent this board from making a decision relative to Sky Fiber, A T T and N I S.
Right.
But, um, A T P, they're not agendized to talk about providing internet services. So you can hear from A T P.
But only on this subject, yes.
Right, unless they wanna, during public comment, they wanna, they wanna make a pitch to provide. A proposal to the county as well, to provide the internet service to those four buildings. But if the county decided, hey, we're gonna go on our agendized items, we're gonna choose A T, A T and T, Sky Fiber or N N I S. The county can do that. Comfortably with that, the parameters of the meeting.
I'm so glad I'm not over here.
So I have a question for, for Sky Fiber, uh, and this goes back, I, I'd be remiss if I didn't ask the question. A couple of years ago, we had a, a, a meeting to discuss getting. Fiber to Tulon Peak for television channels. Since you can shoot signal now that far.
Yeah.
Is that's now a different option than what we had before? Up to the top of Tulon Peak, so we would have, uh, TV channels off of fiber instead of antenna.
Which is always the best, you know, I would use that fiber amount, but.
Yeah, but at that time, the dollar amount was nothing, something we couldn't afford. So it's a worth of discussion at some point in time now on doing that?
Yes, we, we have fiber crews who work with us and we have, um, wireless, uh, crews who work with us. So that would be definitely a discussion that we could, something we could entertain. Do we serve the TV district in Eureka and Elko County?
That's, that, when you said that, that's what, uh.
Yeah, so we're on most of those peaks over there, but getting on Tulon would not be an issue whatsoever from this, from this.
Thank you. Okay. Well, I think, I think we're gonna, we need to wait to agendize so that they're all on there.
Well, I think we need to ask A T P if they even want to consider making a proposal.
I don't know that, I, I don't know that you can ask, I think they have to.
Well, the way the public purchasing works with contracts, if it's, if it's fifty thousand or less. You just, you can solicit some letters, right? I would not advertise because this is about in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. Um, so if it's between fifty thousand and one hundred thousand, then we can solicit three. The county can solicit a three and it's on the agenda for a decision. I don't know, I'm, I'm not really sure how it was even brought up that A T P would be providing the same types of services as the others.
And I don't even.
Because they're not agendized.
I, that's why I say I don't think we're ready to make.
The way I'm reading the agenda, the. The I T department brought in.
Three.
The three, and economic development is brought in.
For something else.
For the broadband internet services. County wide, not for the, the county, but county wide for the residents, that's the way I read this agenda.
Correct, yeah.
Isn't that the way it should be read?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're exactly right.
Then we can make a motion.
Yes, we can, yes, we can.
So.
But that isn't to say that the board doesn't have the discretion to say, well, we like these three proposals. We want it, we want to see if there's more out there.
That's what I think, and I don't think we're ready to have it.
It's agendized a certain way, but the board has the discretion to do that.
I would like a little more clarity from N N I S. On what exactly the monthly cost to the county would be. Um, this isn't really clear.
Right. I think we need more information before.
It's only putting it on the agenda in two weeks, I mean.
That's what I was trying to say, I think we need more information before we, on, on the next agenda. Before we can make the decision.
And if A T and T doesn't have their proposal in, that's their. Yeah, it's not, we can't keep waiting for, for them. And if there's somebody else out there that wants to proposal, that would be fine.
I will, um. I will reach out to N N I S.
A little more crystal clear?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, progress.
Yes, we're close, very close.
Speed of government.
How true it is. Okay, next one up. Okay.
Nice to see you too.
Last time I saw it, this was a COVID fun thing.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
I wanna get the, get the slides up and talk them. Thank you very much, alright, so affiliated technology partners. Uh, this is our response to the Nevada tri-county R five from Purge County, Love Lock, we responded to all three counties. Uh, and we were notified that there was interest from, uh, from Purge and Love Lock in our presentation and what we could bring to the table, so. Want to introduce my company, my, our, our background, affiliated technology partners. It's also known as Wi-Fi in the park, with the company to put the Wi-Fi in all Nevada state parks. On Mexico state parks, lots of state parks around the country and, and the parks program includes community wide world. Broadband, if you can do parks, you can do anywhere, okay? Uh, you can see again, I don't have a beer, I also have another company called The Blue Store. The Blue Store has been my company for over three decades to telecom infrastructure company. We represent three to four hundred different companies directly, A T and T, Cox, Century Link, all of ours, companies, uh. Essentially the major ones and so forth, so that is our business is to represent carriers and put in network solutions. We've been doing this for forty years, we are an auditing company and a network engineering type, uh, implementation company. Give us a stack of phone bills, I'll tell you where every dime goes, I'll track it down to every circuit, I'll tell you how to re-engineer, I get rid of it, how to reprice it, save it. My project at the bank, I took forty two thousand dollars a month, turned it into fourteen, thirty seven phone bills and before. Everything was diversified and redundant, meaning it was, it was not breaking, and I got a hundred twenty five thousand dollars back to my customer because of billionaires. I manage carrier relationships, that is what we do. I want to introduce the partners that are for this project here in Love Lock and Purge, A T and T business now. We represent A T and T, we have for many years through a master agent program, however. You know Chris Wells from the same meetings that we go to, and I have been working with her for the last several years, as you know, trying to. Offer community wide road broadband solutions, which is a challenging environment, but working with Chris Wells. She has connected me to A T and T, New York City, One Rockefeller Center. The man that can say, Dan, you can go sell this government, this government, this government, this government, all across the United States. They are excited about what we're doing at Love Lock, they are looking to help make this a state of the art city. So, Team SOS and I E S, A T and T isn't gonna do it all, it's going to take a group of partners. But the broadband that I'm talking about, the services to the county, to the city, to the businesses, these are A T and T branded services. These are not a reseller service, they're not a reseller in most circumstances. So I'm talking about direct services from A T and T, as far as now, how does that get built? Well, I'm talking about most, a lot of fiber somewhere else, okay, how does that fiber get built? A T and T's not gonna build it all, it's gonna require some additional construction, where A T and T will generally implement a community wide solutions. They will build meeting points, you have to build infrastructure into those meeting points. And then A T and T will activate those services as customers order them, so, uh, I E S, I want to have him stand up please. I E S, I want to introduce, this is my fiber and infrastructure construction company on a different pistol. Give just a little bit of introduction, first off, Troy, please stand up. I'm one of the original independent agents for Cox Communications, their agent program started in Las Vegas. When I became an agent for Cox, I did a million dollars my first year, means I did a lot of new construction builds. There was a legend, there was anything to need. You call Troy, that's, and he's been my friend for a long time, and he is now affiliated with I E S, so, then go ahead, talk to him.
Um, yeah, from I E S, we're, um, a publicly held company, uh, we're primarily. Our division in Las Vegas, we branched out into the tele- telecom company about fifteen years ago. When I started that division, so we supply, um, for Cox in Las Vegas, uh, all their infrastructure needs. To maintain their network, uh, um, we do all their excavation, directional drilling, uh, fiber spicing. Um, we take care of all the hotels and casinos on the strip, uh, so we, we can do everything from the. The meat box, whatever, all the way to the, to the user. So, um, we've been around a long time, we're, um, we just started up in Reno about five or six years ago now, so we're close now, so we got a closer. Closer area, the northern Nevada now, um, we have about hundred and fifty employees in Las Vegas. And about, about ten up in Reno right now. So, um, we can build it up here, so, and we all came, we're kind of excited to see, uh, this project, uh. Uh, happen if it does, so.
Hey, well, thank you very much.
Okay. So Team SOS, so, and now we're trying to implement all of these various services to everyone else. Uh, we're gonna have a team that needs to then provide managed services as well as what A T P can provide. Team SOS is our partner, uh, in, in, in the parks area, rural broadband space, they have a business here in Nevada, as well as one in California. They're part of California Rural Broadband, uh, the California Parks Wi-Fi. I'm gonna let, uh, him, actually, uh, Lawrence, speak a little bit more about his company, but it is, it is the resources that A T P can bring together. Through major partners like A T and T, I E S, and Team SOS, it can turnkey an entire, transform this town into a state of the art community, please. Why don't you just wait for a moment, we're gonna get down to the other slide. Alright, next slide please. I'm gonna introduce a concept, Love Lock four point oh. Predicated on the industry four point oh standard, industry four point oh, in short, let's be on the next slide. That is the next level of manufacturing that enables automated warehouses, smart manufacturing. The type of technology you need in that industrial park that you can advertise, that we have this type of capability. Support this type of manufacturing and operations, that is the concept of what I'm trying to bring to the city is how do we make the entire city. An industry four point oh city, because it's not just for the government, it's not just for those businesses out there. It requires it for the employees, because the employees of those companies are one and one to meet the internet, the businesses that are gonna support them are going to be high speed internet. Next slide please. There's five key projects in connecting the entire city, one is fiber to all of the industrial park sites, right? A T and T's not going to, uh, do that, uh, in all on its own, and there's where I E S comes into play. Fiber cause, alright, we've got a big, uh, opportunity there with the salmon farm, uh, we've been speaking to A T and T about. How to connect the city, and one of the comments they made was, you know, it's not that hard to tap into long haul fiber. With a, with a large operation like Congress, there's one in Congress, there are three to five hundred employees, they're gonna need a lot of bandwidth, they're gonna need fiber. Got a way to probably do it, and so that's just the next piece, then get fiber to all government buildings, businesses, multiple dwelling units. Including non-occupied buildings, so that they can be advertised as internet ready. Then fiber to all of the rooftops, once we now get, uh, enough fiber distribution to enough buildings. We can then put connectivity on vertical assets, don't need every rooftop, but I need enough rooftops, sign tops. Vertical assets that I can now create that with, that's a wireless internet service provider, that as opposed to fiber or terrestrial fiber. We're going to have an A T and T backbone network with enough fiber nodes on enough vertical assets to be able to reach the entire. Host community, it's not community, it's not Purging wide, it's Love Lock wide, I'm not talking about doing this and getting way out of the roots. We can talk about those solutions, but this principally. Love Lock as the four point oh city, and so the hybrid wireless to the rooftops then supports a hybrid fire. Hybrid fiber wireless network infrastructure to all buildings, it'll have an A T and T backbone, it'll probably have another carrier in it. I can either whether it's from broadband, we connect it to it in this town, uh, but it will also, and it will be managed by A T P. And Team SOS as far as that wireless managed service, so A T and T direct into, uh, all of the, uh, all of the main buildings. Uh, and then a hybrid wireless network into all buildings, so each business in government will have a direct fiber connection. And it will have a redundant hybrid fiber wireless connection, so there's your redundancy of reliability, uh, improved, next slide please. This is not a, if we build it, hope you will come solution, this is a purpose built, top down design, high performance fiber hybrid. Hybrid network, if you come all at once, we will build it all at once, we do that, we can build it for pennies on the dollar. We can turn every, we can connect every building in town, and we can then create and a technology ecosystem throughout. Uh, Love Lock, so they can support the industry four point oh or Love Lock four point oh initiative, next slide please. Starts with a set of strategic negotiations, that is my role, that's negotiations are, what does each individual customer need? So the network infrastructure projects, how do I get fiber roughed in here and there and so forth? How do I, now, what are the specific customer projects, what does the city need, what's the county need, what's? Every individual, my goal, my objective, or what my goal is then, is I have to then develop. What are all of those individual projects, group those together so that we can then negotiate with A T and T. At the end of that process, every building's connected, as I discussed, everything's got to stay the art affordable, high speed, because we negotiated in. Next slide please. Thank you, I'm not talking about doing something that is out of the ordinary, this is an industry process of aggregating. Multiple new purchases to reduce the cost of, uh, for cut construction, reduce the individual cost and the speed delivery for all. Next slide please, the dream build, okay, next slide please, the dream build is, I'll give you an example of a dream build. If you take that where the fiber is, at the fiberette, you take that last guy in the industrial park, and he wants to order something, A T and T's gotta build that. And that's, let's say that's a million, well, if I get six, eight clients along the way. Everybody can typically pay the normal rate as opposed to that additional rate, so that is the concept. And what it does is it aggregates that volume to, to bring it to a carry, for this A T and T, Cox or anybody else, that. That multiple customer volume, then what is that total committed revenue versus the total construction cost? They're going to render, oh, that meets internal rate of return? Or no, you got to contribute at one time, customer capex contribution. That is the amount that city-county might, would be required to pay should they, should we go forward, and, and the numbers are accepted. So, let's move on to the next slide, please. And the greater the amount of total committed monthly recurring charges to the carrier, that's what drives the carrier directly. It is not about what might happen in the future, it's about what is on paper, that's what drives the outcome. It's what's committed, what's the construction? And so, at the end of the day, my job, what I'm planning on coming and back and doing, should this all be approved, is that Kathy and I will spend a week to ten days here, meeting with every business, every government, every certain site surveying us to develop a storyboard to present to AT&amp;T. Next slide, please. If we achieve a result, then Love Lock can advertise an industry four-point O city and start attracting high-tech companies to town. Their entrepreneurials will spring up and start taking, occupying your vacant buildings. Your existing businesses can modernize and prosper, you know? All your residents and all their, so now, all the home businesses, all the homes can support, home-based businesses and home offices for these corporations and so forth, as well as the individual business building. If we want, put in a citywide wireless, now the city and the county can start thinking about smart city technology. How to automate functions, have sensors, and reduce costs to, to, to the use of technology because it has a citywide network. And so, you can modernize and improve city services and save money, you can diversify. And, and last one, employees and all newly located businesses, Love Lock will love their internet. That is so critical for you to, to bring business into town. We are doing projects in Death Valley and others where the number one goal is because it's, it's the internet for the employees. They don't care about the visitors, it's about, we got to keep employees. So, that is the key to be able to, not only do the industry and government, but to do the residences in the same, same boat. Next slide, please. Thank you. This is the process, and it's still my only really busy slide. But essentially, it, it, the, the process starts by purging and well-wait, performing the citizenry and businesses that we're going to engage a process of trying to, it, it feasibility study in the beginning. Not, there's no commitment at this point, but I have to get all of the addresses, I have to meet with all the government, I have to perform the site surveys and and assess all the, basically, we put together all these individual orders in a, in a group block and say, AT&amp;T, what is now going to be the construction cost to do this? And that includes the construction at Cosgrave to break it in up there, the construction for roughing it in at the industrial park, so it's shovel-ready. All of that then says, okay, based on committed revenue, total construction cost, here's the dollar amount. When I come back after this, after I've been here, I put that together and negotiate. That's when I come back and present, here's what the, here's what the costs are. And what, and in a ballpark sense, I can't give you down to the penny. But at that point, you would agree that, okay, we can, we can, we can find a way to come up with capex contribution. Everybody signs new AT&amp;T agreements for their direct, direct businesses and governments. AT&amp;T stalls those services directly, so they activate and they support them, they're billed directly by AT&amp;T. But we provide a lot of that infrastructure to enable them to do it, to, to do it this morning. Easily streamlined, less expensive, and so forth. So, at that point, once the fiber to the businesses, governments are underway, now that has been agreed to, then we can start, oh, now we need to go and do the citywide for the wireless. Now, we need to then seek the same process of how do we get citizens to engage and say, yeah, I would like that. If you're going to give me a, this type of a network, I'd like to be a part of that. And, and then solicit subscriptions in advance again, more volume reduces the total infrastructure cost of the city. Say, what does it take to get infrastructure put in one time and have it done so that the city and this area is just, they're lit up, okay? And then at that point, ATP will be the ATP account representative. We will manage the account as your sales agent, if you want to use that term however, but we will, we can marshal the resources to the carriers, that's what we do. I need engineers, I need quotes, I need, you know, the software people, that's all available to us. We're on their team, we're not a customer, we are part of their team, okay? And then ATP and Team SOS, we will then construct and build a fiber wireless network. And that will then provide all of the residences and businesses with the, with the other connection. Next slide, please. All right, what are the costs, all right? The cost of the payment of all your individual phone and internet bills, okay? Simple, like anybody else, and then, as I've kind of been describing, these are the elements of the construction that have to be dealt with. Construction of government, construction to the rooftops, the industrial park, Cosgrave, et cetera, all of those make up, what's that customer capex? Based against the volume of, of committed revenue, what's the one-time construction cost? Next slide, please. The process to, to go forward starts on an agreement that, yes, we're looking to place new AT&amp;T orders, subject to cost approval, so that I can negotiate in good faith with AT&amp;T that this is the direction that everybody wants to go. An agreement in principle that, yes, if I negotiate, you know, a fair amount of, of, of money that is required to do the whole citywide, that the city and the county go, yeah, you come up with a deal like that, we'll do it. Again, it's just good faith right now, we're not looking for a document, we're saying, start the process. Letters of support and agency, so what I need is I need a letter of agency. This is the document that I'm asking you to sign. All it does is say, Danny can go negotiate with AT&amp;T and everybody else to help put this thing together, come up with the terms and conditions, and then come back and present it to you. It'll require public relations support to get everyone involved, that needs to be involved. And then to help us coordinate, we come back to meet with every potential direct customer as well as surveying the city. We will need to have, we want to come here a week or ten days, and we, we, we need assistance from the city and the county to make sure that everyone's aboard, so we can go meet with everybody, talk with them. And then probably we have to meet with city and county departments for construction and permits and poles, things like that, that Troy and his team and then Team SOS would be concerned with. Next slide, please. Thank you. All right, services available, okay? AT&amp;T fiber internet, as we, you know, that's kind of the basics, right? And then, but AT&amp;T VoIP telephone, one of the things that, that Justin mentioned, new phone system, okay? VoIP telephone, that's the way to go. Well, this could be an AT&amp;T direct branded, AT&amp;T quality phone system for you, that is available, all right? I've been designing phone systems for a long time. I'm very good at PBs and so forth, so we can optimize that. AT&amp;T cybersecurity systems, all of the ransomware cyber attacks that are in the news these days. First thing AT&amp;T said, we've got stuff, we've got protection packages for that, you know? We'd like to offer that to the city and county, so that's part of managed services, the type of network that, that Justin was talking about. That is a private managed network, that is what AT&amp;T can provide. When we did submit the initial response to the Tri-County RFI, we did quote a ten-location hub and spoke, ten gigabit, one gigabit network for forty-six thousand dollars a month. AT&amp;T was going to build that to the airport, it's now subject to, you know, final surveys, but they, they threw AT&amp;T reseller, not AT&amp;T direct on that one. Okay? But AT&amp;T, yeah, we were going, and so they quoted all ten locations for it. So, if you want to build it up there, it's all, it's all possible. And then, and then now we end up with, with the IES construction, so not only do they do fiber construction, but they do all of the interior. So, you want to do all new cabling infrastructure, you want a new data, you want to, you know, clean up a data room, you want to, you know, build an infrastructure, they can do all of that, they do it in space. Like I said, Troy's been a legend, he's just a cent and forget it guy for Cox, and I just love it, I just try to go do that. He gets cable up first time every time, the type of, uh, giving you an example, McCarran Airport. The only person that McCarran Airport will allow to do cabling in the airport for Cox is Troy Shuler, IES. This is a quality outfit, they do it right, they do all the casinos and, you know, and things, and malls in Las Vegas, all the touchstone. Okay, they do sixty percent of Cox installations. And then ATP solutions, we are, again, representative of, directly through agents and through master agencies and through our own direct relationship. We represent three to five hundred companies, access control, security, surveillance, all the types of services that are going to be needed in all of these companies that move in, we can turnkey the whole thing. This makes it easy, that's what we do. I'm not buying a reseller, I'm bringing in major partners, for the most part, and they provide it, and then I manage those relationships. I've managed to getting services that you need put in, I am your point of escalation and customer service in addition to what they offer. So, we are a value-added consultant in that respect as opposed to giving resources. Next slide, please. Oh, Team SOS, I'm sorry, no, backup one. All right, now, Lawrence, Lawrence and I have teamed up, yes, please, through, uh, the initial project, we teamed up on this California State Park WiFi. And, and, and Lawrence has been about thirty years in, in deploying the gas technology, some of those incredible applications. And so, we're extremely excited about partnering with Team SOS. And before I, before I let Lawrence speak, I want to mention FiveSat, Satellite Internet, somebody asked, okay? We are also a representative of FiveSat, we represent all of them. In some cases, in the rural, very deep rural, satellite is all you can get without paying for it. That's why, there's an application for it, but we're not talking about satellite here. But we are, FiveSat is turning over the Parks and Community Rural Broadband program to ATP Solutions, and then they are providing us with underlying software and satellite media. And the partner, and the reason they're doing that is because we are partners with Lawrence, who has the capabilities to actually implement, host all that software, deploy it, manage it, call center and so forth. Lawrence, I'm going to go let you turn it on.
Thank you. I'll try to keep this safe, because there's always so much to talk about, but.
So, just a quick way, so Danny brings to us this, this ability of just bringing all the pieces together. When we look at a network, you know, the, the services, just browsing the internet, the TV, you all talked about it a little bit ago. We have to bring in different parts.
And I'm going to talk about it again.
You're going to talk about it, it's good, I like. So, let me give a, just a, a quick kind of my philosophy is, so before I moved my business and myself over to Reno, I spent five years looking at the big picture. What makes sense, what doesn't make sense? I've actually owned my own buildings and over in Sacramento, my data centers are there. When I looked at what was the best thing for my company long-term, I came up with my analysis that Danny has this process. I did my process, what's the best costing, what's the best data centers, what's the best internet connectivity? Because my business, they predominantly a cloud-based business of hosted phone services, backup disaster recovery. And after I did that process, it took about three years to get to a point where I said, you know, I think I've covered the big picture of where am I going as a company? Where do I, where do I need to build my infrastructure before I make that investment? Then I started moving rather quickly, and we're actually just, this week, we're finishing our moves into the switch data centers in McCarran and Las Vegas. And then I'll get to close my data centers down, and the cost savings was compelling, to put it that way, the benefit of the internet. So, this is a business owner you're, you're talking to who said, I'm going to move over to Reno, and I'm going to move the bulk of my business to Reno because I can get high-speed internet at a better cost than I can at my own facilities that I own in California. And so, I just bought, I'm in the process now of bringing about forty jobs over to Reno. And, uh, is Mayor Giles or Giles?
Giles.
Giles, he got it last night. So, I just bought, if you don't know that, I bought the, the Lawton's Hot Springs, if anybody's been around for a while. So, that's my new home, over there on Forest Street. So, we're, what we do is, anyhow, I like to rehabilitate old properties, because I bought that abandoned building of forty years. We're rehabilitating, but the, the idea is we get a process, we go through the process, we look at the big picture. If we make decisions on a kind of a, 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 not a narrow channel, then we start to cut other decisions out or make them feasibly impossible. We were brought in, or I was invited in to participate in the whole broadband project to help economic development in the community. Bringing people in and having an attractive, you know, backbone network or just network services that businesses say, hey, I can operate a business that runs heavily in the cloud or on the internet services, that they're going to host in the cloud, et cetera. If we don't have a really good backbone or network, then I'm going to go look next door, or to the next city. And that's one of the things that Heidi was sharing with us yesterday, she wrote this around, is we really need to look at that big picture. So, you know, I love the idea of hearing, you need a new phone system, your internet's eighteen up and three down, whatever, but, you know, that's core. You know, when it really comes to working, but we want to look at the big picture, and that's what Danny's really bringing in here, is like, let me look at all the pieces and bring it together. It may take another, you know, two months, but if you get the big picture handled, it'll be well worth the, the time investment. Now, just a little bit of credibility, this is, this is, you know, who I am, is we have just been, we built the, the first California State Lifeguard Emergency Communication System along the coastline. That is our bill, it is our solution, we built the software. So, we have, we have wirelessly enabled the entire coastline of California for specifically emergency services, California State Lifeguard, first responders. That was back in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, so that's where we really got a lot of credibility, because I get known. Now, just abilities, we rarely are the vendor, we are the subcontractor underneath. So, if you look at the California State Park system, that's one by Xerox Corporation, delivered by Team SOS. And that's, we kind of stay behind the scenes, just like IES does, Cox Communication, but this is the delivery arm. And that's how we've operated for many years. And exciting though, last week, or two weeks ago, we were awarded the California State Parks Guest Wireless. Again, all this stuff, we were talking about how you get down to a home, to an individual camper, et cetera. So, we've been awarded the three hundred eighty-four state parks in California for Xerox Corporation, now Kondo, they changed their names. We support all California State Parks Point of Sale, so we're a highly security-conscious company. We work, we work with Greater Nevada Credit Union here for eighteen years now. We're doing all of their call centers, communication, voice communications, we're very adept at the remote areas. And then, last Friday, we were awarded the Rural Broadband for the State of California. Again, that we're, and that was direct, again, we've only have two contracts with the state that actually have our name on it. And so, we were just awarded that, and that job is exactly what we're talking about here with your city. Is how do you bring wireless, effective wireless, out to rural communities? And a number of my clients are rural community urban development companies, so we partner with them as well. So, we're very well-versed, we're very well-known, we were invited to bid on that state project by the, the lead of that group is actually the Department of Parks in California. So, we're excited to be over here, leveraging the exact same technology and experience we've had over the last thirty years of doing this in Nevada. And Love Lock was the first conversation we're having outside of our corporate accounts, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I'll try not to talk anymore.
The next line is questions, all right? So, the process is really straightforward, you know, as far as how do we approach a city? For me, it's actually technically easy to think about how to do this, and what the processes are still, forty years, just same thing over and over. But the hard part is getting permission, so I'm only asking for permission to negotiate the initial things, and present some information. But when I put it together is, yes, city, county, district, everything. And based on that group of charges, should reduce costs, I can't guarantee the cost, I don't know what they will be. But AT&amp;T is, I get so excited, they're opening up a portal for us to, there's fiber that I could order, I'm not going to, I'm going to, they're giving us incredible access and support for this project. In fact, they asked us to take this and, and duplicate this and offer this type of a solution throughout Nevada and other rural communities throughout the United States. So, they are looking at what we're doing as a, as a new solution in the rural broadband space that can maybe be cookie-cuttered elsewhere. What we do know is that the process of the RFI did not produce the type of solution that needed or desired. And yet, we're looking at it again, purpose-built, how do you actually build it? And I know that I can, we're doing it this process, the costs are way down, the profit, the performance is way up, the reliability is up, the service is better. I mean, this is just what I do, and so, to that, I'll leave it to your questions and how we might proceed.
So, does that make AT&amp;T the sole internet provider?
Not necessarily, however, I did do, I've done a lot of homework to find out what is available here. Right, I communicated with a company, or a federal agency called Connected Nation. They gave me maps, and showed me all the fiber in town, and I talked to all of them. Have anybody heard of a company called Seo Communications? They are a fiber company, they provide fiber to the Department of Transportation, to Nevada Energy. They are a major provider throughout the United States, and one of the board ministers of the RFL. I had read that like this town that we pay for. They couldn't even connect, there is very little ability to connect. The only other connection point is this location. The only other connection point is this complication down at the telecom hut near Love Lock Inn, you know, that big satellite dish is there? That's connected by central. Other than that, there's about twelve A T and T fiber lit buildings, and then you got A T and T copper. To tell you there, I talked to them, there's nothing else that I could get, okay? But Central Link is there. Elon Musk is coming in, so how do I build in redundancy to my network? That is a knit, that's a detail on, on, on later on, okay, how do I build that in? The key is, how do I get that primary A T and T top shelf infrastructure in? Then I'm not dealing with the type of problems, I am not called copper infrastructure. And a lot of what you're dealing with exactly is your copper infrastructure. Once you get fiber in, in, installed, your, most of your issues are going to be resolved. You know, even though you tap out DSL in eighteen three, DSL is now a state of technology, okay? So it, it has its issue, fiber is a nice clean service. Now, one of the things that was mentioned is dedicated fiber. That is, that's one type of fiber. There is also shared fiber, also known as G PON or gigabit passive optical network. And that is a less expensive fiber than I am trying to negotiate for the city. What that, so give you an example, a one gigabit dedicated circuit, so one is approximately three thousand dollars. A one gigabit shared fiber circuit, five or six hundred, it's adapter map. What is needed is, you know, private network, you might need dedicated or another type of service. We've got an idea of that dark fiber as opposed to a mass network. So you're close enough to all of your buildings, put in one other, run dark fiber hole and put back to one switch, it's like one big network. Clean or something, less than thirty points. So there's, there's more than one way to skin the cap on there, right? So we're here to then look at it all, determine what's the optimal pathway to get connected to a lot of services, what's the best way to price it?
Do we not have fiber optics running somewhere around Love Lock?
We do to the hospital and the cooperative extension community center, the school district, and I'm not sure where else.
Right, and there, there is some fiber infrastructure, not enough, right? And that is, and the key is to get a paying customer that wants it so that we can get that fiber infrastructure built out to all of the locations. Then, once that infrastructure is in place, now you're gone, okay? You don't build it one time, then you maintain it.
I'm gonna play the devil's advocate here, but Southwest Gas, they were gonna bring the pipelines all the way up through counties from the prison. It never happened, even though we were promised that, it never happened.
Well, they are, we are dealing on, let's see, you gotta appreciate that I'm going to be on committed signed orders, that's essentially, and they build it. I mean, this is not about please bring it in, not that they can build it, they will come. This is, I'm taking your order, I'm going to A T and T, and I'm gonna have a board that says it's fibers there, I can just order it. And, you know, so it can be, can be very straightforward, once we get the infrastructure.
I have the same question I asked before, you, you talked about getting service to our airport, which is, I mean, that would, to me, is a wireless service.
Or fiber.
Okay, fiber, that's what I, yeah. So we have this mountain top that provides TV and inter TV. Can you provide that as well? So for wireless fiber up there so I can get TV channels?
Again, so where we, where we headed to?
It's on top of the mountain, right outside here.
Okay.
You know where Tulon is? Tulon?
The exit.
The exit out this way, anyway, it's outside of town, it's a mountain top above there.
Okay.
Not, not a place you're gonna do it to.
No, 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 that, no, likely not, no, that, that's why it's a combination of fiber and wireless, okay?
Danny, can I just say something here? So, so this gentleman said some things, well, we're very, our party affairs. What we've done throughout the Bronx and California, the coastline, is that similar, how we get to it? Is we, we specialize in solar powered backup batteries, that's all of our lifeguard towers are on, with different types of microwave antennas to drive that. So if we said, hey, here's a hot off point down, you know, where there is power, when you ban the lead back in, then we can take a beam up to the top, to the tower. If there's no power, which I would assume is the case, we put a solar power station battery back.
We have power, that's not an issue. I just want TV signal by fiber.
What's that?
I'm looking for TV signal by fiber.
Yes, yes. A T and T goes direct TV, alright, that's number one, is that TV services are available there. I haven't negotiated one exactly, specifically to answer that question, but that's in the market basket. Number two, working with Bi-Sat and Parks, we have to deal with the additional TV. We can integrate TV into Wi-Fi so that we can offer a direct set top box service or linear TV over the Wi-Fi. So the technology is out there, it's a matter of integration and getting the right partners to say, oh, you got a network, how do I integrate it? How do I deliver it at the end? There's nothing impossible about any of this, it's simply a matter of engineering and figuring out the right logistics and what the cost is, nobody's customer. So processes, this is what I'm looking for, what's that store work, what are the needs? How do I then figure that out, come back and say, here's how we're gonna do it? So all very possible, anything can go over that net, voice, internet, video, streaming, so forth and so on. So that's the type of network we're talking about.
So what you're asking for right now is the okay to go to individual businesses and, and homo, what are you asking for exactly?
What I'm asking for originally, and Mayor Giles was asking me to draft a letter, and I will do that now, send that following on to this meeting. But I'm asking for a letter of agency that allows me to negotiate, not issue orders, not assignment, being subject to your signature on anything. But I now become your project manager, the next step, and I am the first negotiator. You made the decision, but I communicate all those decisions and all the pieces with everybody, so the project stays online. So all I'm asking for is yes, to meet with every government in towns, every business in towns, and what the county and city about where all the vacant buildings are gonna be, fire rough, roughing, roughing it in, so A T and T can easily deliver it, okay? And, and they want me to be at the prison, so anybody in this area that might be an A T and T direct customer, I want to be there. Because that total volume is what starts the negotiation. Then A T and T will give pricing, negotiate the terms and conditions for me to come back as a group project, subject to which customer sign, county, city, great. Yep, we'll pay the one time customer capex contribution. And speaking of that, I've been talking to Heidi, I've been talking with Mayor Giles about our assistance in helping find the money for that. Okay, this, this is, there's a lot of rural broadband money out there, we are not experts at that yet, we are going to involve ourselves in that process downstream. But right now, just to fast track this process, we're saying, here's the customer capex. It'd be the county and city's responsibility to find that government broadband funding. Now, we will assist, okay, right? Want to go meet with the governor's office and, and advocate for it, because this is, this is new outside the box. What is actually a game changer is that the R F I process failed to provide a solution other than our proposal. That says that what we do, that process does not yield what we're looking for, we need to look outside of the box. I want to take that message to the governor's office and try to find money for it. Mayor Giles has contacted the Treasury Department. I've been, I've met Mayor Pete, I'll probably go back to Washington and talk to him about how to change the regulations to stream like this. Let me be talking to the Department of Interior Secretary level, so that.
So I'm confused. If we were to do this and you went through and you built this, A T and T is this, becomes the sole provider for internet?
No, they've become, they've become the primary fiber provider.
So then internet companies would lease or, or?
If a competitor wanted to buy, I could sell it to them or they could go direct to A T and T, right? So as us, as A T and T coming into all the customers, we're just offering directly A T and T regular services like any other customer, but us as the sales agent with our connection in New York. The wireless department section, okay, is A T P and I E S and Team S O S are going to build the additional infrastructure to the roots. And we will, we will, Team S O S and A T P will offer a wireless solution built under our name to the individual locations. So A T and T will build direct for fiber and Team S O S and A T P will build for the hybrid fiber.
And that doesn't stop the other individual internet agencies or companies from providing their service.
No, it does not, no, this is, this is, this is competitive world, we think we got a better solution. And we think that we'll have a lot of participation, uh, once we negotiate it and then we get the pricing. Because it's, you know, you're better with a direct service than you are with a, you know, generally a non-direct. And, and if the service is there and you've got value added services, you know, we, we, we'll stand up against our competitors. But, you know, if there, if everybody's, if someone's happy with what they've got, that's their business first, no one's forcing anybody to offer them a new set of solutions that you've never seen before. Because we do, we go about this in a very different way than others do, we've got forty years of experience. With Karen, we negotiate with Karen, knowing what they can do, what they will do. And that was that Chris, why don't we get connected, me too, with A T and T, with the guy you brought, that's just giving me more power, like you can't believe.
I just, I'm, I'm concerned because our economy is not the best. And I can't really see individual homeowners and a lot of the businesses. You know, they may say, okay, but if it's very expensive, they're not going to be able to do it.
Agreed, we understand that, and that is why the.
The volume, right.
And negotiate the volume and how do I negotiate the pricing now? I recognize this is not a super wealthy community and they, they can't afford the big prices and there's not a lot of large customers here. However, A T and T is still looking at this as a precedent setting new process, a new solution set that can be replicated. And so the key is for me to go back to them, if we get that pricing, but there's also the possibility of third party investment as well. Both my partners, have been said, well, maybe it makes sense for us to maybe put some money in to make this, because there's a share of the, that is how we all live. I'm not asking you to pay me to do this, I get paid by the phone carriers and, and the providers, when something goes in, you pay phone bill, whatever, I get a little piece of it. That's our compensation. So my partners did participate in, participated in the wireless revenue. And, and so when we come back, we recognize there's not both loads of money here. However, we might find both loads of money as a proof of concept, and that's really what this is. This is a proof of concept to, to figure out a way that we can do this and, and streamline, straight ball, the purpose of the fashion is just go town after town and do it. A T and T, I'm sure they got, they're really excited and I'm just maybe coming to pass. So they're, 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 I don't know what they will come up with, but they're excited about it, they're promising to me.
So a four point O city and five G, are they the same thing?
No, not, no, no.
Is it a four G or what is a four point O?
Okay, all right, all right, four point O is a, is industry manufacturing term that says I have technology that will support automated warehouse, smart manufacturing. That Sam turn into robots and automated warehouses, automated low trucks, that is industry four point O. That becomes a marketing, Love Lock.
Yeah, I understood that, so, but it's not provided.
No, five, no, five G is cellular technology, okay? That is operating at a different frequency and characteristics than four G, okay? And so you don't generally build businesses based upon lines on cellular technology, that's good backup, it's not good prime. Okay, so, but that's, again, that's just one of the, one of the types of programs, fiber, D S L, copper, terrestrial microwave, satellite, satellite, you know, L three G, four D, five D. Those are all broadband backlash solutions, okay? Then you go into, how do I then distribute it, how do I then manage it?
The, the G just means generation, so it's fifth generation cellular technology.
Right, and, and where this is industry four point O generation for industry technology is really what it is.
So Danny, just to, because I think there's a, just some verification, like to back questions, so overall, is part of the city's usage of internet, as you're just covering earlier today, does have an impact on the overall citywide project or the broadband project? So if there is an opportunity, you know, that, that's one of the cost justification, if we provide a city with the, the, per office, the local offices, that contributes to the overall financial model of what the act goes at. So there is a conflict here, I realize, I was, right, speaking to your conversation, like, it makes a problem, not a problem, but a complex situation. And as Starlink, Starlink, etc. And A T and T, A T and T did not provide a bit, as you said, A T and T was not on that agenda, right? So just something I want to point out to consider.
So this is a process that we're offering, it's not a specific project or proposal yet. But once we go through the process and do the due diligence, feasibility, then we come back and see.
That would conclude that.
Yeah, that would include the county office, because we, but we, we know the specific requirements, we'll start getting pricing on the telephone system, anything that everybody wants, basically getting A T and T folks involved. And then looking at what else do we need to construct, you know, and industrial park and so forth, adding it all up.
I don't think we're at the point where we are ready to make. Yes.
I just wanted to say that every time that Western Latin Valley District, you know, we've been saying to, we've been saying for a long time, we better run it, we better run it, we better run it. And any time there's a grant that comes up, I can apply, because I don't have a grant. So maybe this is a way of getting a plan, getting some figures, so that I can actually start it. I don't know.
There, there is, but there's also gonna be a lot more money coming down the pipe. National Bank said, well, don't get overzealous.
What do you think?
Because there's gonna be a lot of money coming down the pipe, and USDA has grants and stuff. So you're going to work on a letter for the city?
Which I'm for the county as well.
Yeah, and for the county, and then if we can have that for our next meeting, so we know what we're agreeing to.
Sure, absolutely.
I would be comfortable with that.
That's fine, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm asking for you, and it's, it's a non binding letter.
Yeah, no, I, I understand.
And, but I want to be able to go to the, you know, our officials in other agencies and speak on your behalf and the city's behalf in requesting funding, special funding, whatever, to make this proof of concept happen, I want to go advocate for that. And I need your permission, any document that says I can do that, and again, it's just all of this.
Well, to make it legitimate.
That is exactly, that's right, and that's to getting permission.
Yeah, okay, so if you could provide that letter to Karen for our next agenda?
I will, I will forward that to, to, to Heidi, and she will forward it to all, she's the union member.
Okay, that would be awesome, okay. I really appreciate all of you coming and explaining what you do, I mean, this is awesome, and we do need broadband, there's no question.
No, absolutely.
You know, and this, unfortunately, you know, you took the effort to do the tri-county proposal and that didn't go anywhere, but this may go somewhere, and that would be great.
Well, we're hoping so, I mean, we, we.
And we don't have the expertise, we don't have a clue.
No, but.
As you can tell by my questions.
Now, you, you've seen me for three years running around and offering.
A lot longer than three years.
When we have jobs, I keep turning up.
Yeah, no, you guys are awesome, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you very much, okay. The agreement was Sky Fiber, how, is that for a year, is that three years or a month, month or? Yeah, I just, I was just wondering how long the commitment was, because this is gonna take a while.
Yeah.
Oh, so you're saying it's long.
Well, I don't have a clue, I mean, at this point, I don't even, well, I think I understand. It's, it's a, it's a long process. It's, it's a, it's a long process.
Well, the difference between one and three is the monthly cost starts coming down if you do a three. Along with the setup costs also coming down. So we were only asked.
For the one.
Yeah.
It was one year. A year, yes.
Okay. Well, you know, we, we can adjust it any way you want.
Could, could you provide a three-year to Justin?
Yes.
Please?
For sure.
Okay. All right. Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Lacy, you have anything?
Um, our tax bill opens on Friday. We started with a hundred and thirty-seven persons. We had about thirty that paid. So, and then we have my ultimate for the one-year notice that we set out. Um, last year, because of switching systems, we weren't able to send out our courtesy letters. So it was about a thousand letters on that notice last year. So you'll, you'll see how much those courtesy letters.
Oh, is that a hundred and seventy? I don't, I might stay here. Oh, seven hundred twenty-four. I knew there was a seven in there. So, do you want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to.
We're just acknowledging.
To acknowledge the delinquent tax.
I will second that motion.
Motion in a second. Favor.
Hi, hi.
Hi.
Do we need to go back?
I'm just saying.
Okay.
Cause Heidi left and now she's back.
So the other thing I have going on is the. Letter of support for the Nevada IED Regional Development Authority. We're ready to send that request for proposal to the governor's office of economic development. And through our, um, team meetings, which, um, included Shayla, Ted Bendur, and Mayor Giles, and myself from Pershing County. Um, up in Humboldt County, it was Dave Mendiola, who's the county manager, Alicia Heiser, who is the city manager. And Kent Mahner, who is both city's attorneys, um, attorney. And, um, Jan Morrison and then her chairman from her board is Pat, Pat Gray. And so together we've worked on this, uh, request for proposal. We think we're good to go. And Patty Herzog, who is the rural director for GOET. Was in on our last team meeting and, um, she kind of, you know, gave it a cursory glance and nothing there. Was, you know, sticking out to her as to, you know, why it shouldn't go forward. And so that's where we're at. Dave Mendiola will be signing the RFP. City of, um, excuse me, county of Humb- Humboldt has agreed to take on the administrative role at this point. And they have a comptroller and it seemed to be, um, set up for that. There will be no charge to RDA for this at this point unless something becomes burdened from it. And then as a, as a, you know, both cities and counties will come together and, and decide how do we, um, address that. But for right now, we're going to pretend that there's nothing that, you know, go wrong with this. Um. There is going to be, you know, s- some autonomy to it, you know, like we have in the past, you know, so. And I, I believe what I've heard figure-wise is fifty thousand dollars for each county would come, come to each county. Um, so that we would have fifty thousand dollars for Pershing County for economic development to, you know, work on projects. Maybe it's broadband, maybe it's something else. I don't know. Marketing definitely. Um, and then, um, and then there would be some combined things that we need to do together, such as marketing the, the, uh, the, the regional development authority as a whole. So that might be a website or some social media or, or, or. So how do we, we need to pull those resources together. So it might be a check from us and a check from them, or however that works, you know, to, to do those services. And Jan and I took the, um, RFP and we compared it to the metrics that we have to report on each quarter to go it. And so in the RFP, we had listed goals, you know, such as housing and workforce and, you know, this, that, and the other. And then we made sure we could link that back to the metrics that we have to report on. So that we're not setting ourselves up for failure or frustration. And, and so we feel very confident in this, in this process. What we've also completed or will be getting ready to submit to, um, the cities and the counties is the interlocal cooperative agreement. And, and that was drafted by Kent Mahner. We went through it line by line a couple of meetings ago. And so, um. I think really the only thing to finish up on that was the, what did we want our name to be? And after a lot of discussion, we all agreed that Nevada IED Regional Development Authority was what we, what we. So that's kind of where we're at. I just need to make sure that you guys are all right with this and send us a letter of support that, yes, the county of Pershing wants to participate. And partner with, um, Winnebago, Humboldt and Love Lock in this process.
Could you work with Karen on the draft of the letter of support?
Yeah, yeah.
And then, um, the chair looks excited.
Yeah.
Perfect. So I'll go ahead and make a motion that, um, we submit a letter of support for the Nevada IED Regional Development Authority. Thank you.
Motion in a second. All those in favor.
Okay.
And then, um, we are going to submit that, um, the date of submission is May twenty-eighth by ten AM. I believe that's a Friday. Um, I told Jan, I said, well, I want it done by the twenty-seventh, because I'm going to be taking the twenty-eight off.
Well, yeah, you don't want it.
No, I don't want it hanging over our heads, but, um, it's, it's on Dave Mendiola's desk and ready to go. Otherwise, I don't have a whole lot to, to update you on. I mean. Working on a lot of different things, nothing about speeches today.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we're on to Reed. Nothing, really. Lori.
Are we still required?
No, you, no, you're fine.
Good morning.
Morning.
It's like a little department. Um, so effective Monday, the twenty-fourth, Jennifer Hill, um, will come on full-time. Um, this past Monday, she and Morgan, our trainer, uh, both went to Southern Nevada Assessors Association. Provides pretty much a free education, we excluding the, um, classes that are certified by, these certified instructors. They went to a D class, which was great, because that is something we all need to, um, brush up on a few real. And Morgan will be in that class all week. And other than that, we're just cruising along. It's already time again for personal property declarations to go out, if you can imagine that.
Oh, lucky.
Yeah, yeah, I thought so too, but yeah. Though, you know, it just seems to be a circle and then eventually, you know, getting with Lacy and. Lacy will be sending people bills and then I can expect visitors, so then they go on again.
Yep.
So.
Round, round circle.
Yes. So I have the one agenda item that is, you know, that the traditional, um, interlocal agreement or contract, excuse me. And Bryce, our DIU, thank you for helping me with that.
So you got the twenty-hour. So one question I have, and we only get paid two dollars.
For a.
For transaction.
Not all transactions, Larry.
Not all, but.
A renewal or if you buy a pretty new truck, like I see Bryce has been driving lately. That's a two, that's a two-dollar reimbursement. If you come in with grandpa's truck that's been on the farm for forty years and you want now. To title it for one of the kids in high school, which can take two to four hours researching. And time doesn't really matter. The fact is, there is no reimbursement for title changes ever.
So why can't we solicit DMV to increase these fees?
That's exactly where I was going.
Yeah.
Is that something that's in that contract that we can try to change or amend?
Uh, we could approach the attorney general's office and negotiate with them. They're the ones that draft the contracts on behalf of the DMV. Fairly certain that the DMV would probably push back against that. It's always worth trying.
I think it's worth trying. I mean, there's something, you know, but I think you mentioned it's been that way since two thousand eight.
Well, that's my only records, because that's when I became a team member. I don't have any prior history.
It could have been longer than that.
It could have been.
You know, um, and I appreciate what you said and also agree with what Bryce said, because anytime I. For example, COVID, I wanted gloves and masks, which meant a lot for my staff in, um, DMV handling the money. And the director who works under the governor, um, Miss, Mrs. Or Ms. Julie Butler, made it very clear that. They would not provide any of that to include the protective shields. We're county employees, so. Reach up to your county for that. They have not been proactive in helping on those sorts of levels. So I, I agree with Bryce that it may hit a dead end.
Well, and, um, just off the top of my head, I'm not aware of how those fees are established. Set by, I know, obviously they're set by DMV, but I don't know if they're, uh, part of the NAC code.
Yeah.
Uh, that can only be changed. By the DMV. I don't know if they're legislative. It's just something that I never had occasion to research, so. I would have to look at that to see if it would even be beneficial to attempt to negotiate the contract. Because if they're already established by the NAC or the NRS, then, you know, they're not going to be changed by contract.
So can we ask you to look into that?
Yeah.
And I don't have any history, Bryce. I don't have any history in. In what DMV records I retained, as, as you can see, their, their interlocal contracts are very generic. So I don't, I don't know how, um, it started in the, in the rural sites, the courtesy sites. I don't have any history.
How many, um, counties have rural sites about?
Off the top of my head, um, Marika has it in the assessor's office. Esmeralda has it in the assessor's office. Story County's clerk treasurer just offered to take it from the assessor. For some reason in Humboldt, it's in the recorder's office. And I can't talk about White Pine.
Yes.
Um. Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't lander. It was, I did. Humboldt has full service. Minnell County has full service. I go to Minnell County when I do my driver's license.
Minnell County has full service.
By their safe ways. I go there because you don't have to.
Exactly.
Maybe because of locations. Thank you for the correction. Reed and Lacy are right. Lander has a kind of the Tashma Hall area for their DMV. And so I don't know how it started in anybody's offices or why.
How close you are to other ones.
Yeah.
Military.
I don't know if Karen was here when it was started, or if Donna Giles, or if it was Reed's rather, because I don't know. It, it just is in different elected offices normally.
We used to have a DMV here.
No, that was just.
They came like once a week.
Thank you.
Driver's test kind of.
Yes, because I used to.
Registration is always, well, as long as I.
Yes, and I agree with Lacy, because I would drive the seniors on the senior van for their driver's licensing. We know that budget cuts took that away from us as well. So I don't know the history. I tried. I did some digging and.
No, it's.
I know I've been a battle, we think, trying to reaching out to others, how, how did it start and. You know, how do you all work amongst it and.
And everybody gets two dollars.
Yes, the fees have never changed to the assessor slash clerk.
It's not positive, but I want to say like that report that we did, those minutes, I want to say it has like an NAC on it, but I don't know.
Does it? I'll go back and pull, I see. I mean, it's a great service and it's, um, it, it's something that this county provides, because. It does not make enough money to provide what we do for them. You know, so I just wanted to do some research so that there was awareness and. Um, the only reason I was hung up on the twenty hours is because they are Persian County employees, not state employees. And I, it seemed a bit like they were mandating to me that someone has to sit there twenty hours in a club. Has not always the case, if there's a statue or someone is ill, or there's a tragedy. I, I can't sign that, because I can't commit to that.
Yeah, so we got that part changed.
Bryce did for me. And the lady's really, she's a sweetheart. She was understanding.
Instead of, uh. Agreeing today to the, to the agreement, let's just set it out. Put it out two weeks and then give, that gives you two weeks at least. See what you find out.
I'm fairly certain they're established by the NAC, so, but I'll look into it.
If you will.
Yes. We'll go look at my receipts too, Bryce. I've just been a little bit buried and I may have missed that in my research, so. Um, and I'll put it. I'll be back in two weeks. I'll make that effort. So, thank you for this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Bryce Shields, attorney, approval of a, a plan to provide indigent defense services in Persian County. Which will be sent to the Indigent Defense Commission.
So the legislature is requiring that rural counties submit a plan. For the provision of indigent defense services to the Indigent Defense Commission. The deadline is September. That the Indigent Defense Commission approves the county plan. As you recall, we've talked about this several times, but as you recall, anything in excess of what the county has averaged the last three fiscal years. Has to be paid by the state of Nevada, okay? If it's included in our plan.
Okay.
So Persian County finished its plan early, because we thought it was a May first deadline, which it was, but then they switched it on us. Um, and I would just like to provide the plan to the board for approval, so we could send it off to the Indigent Defense Commission. There you have it.
And there you have it.
That's it. Uh, when we went through the, uh, budgeting process for the upcoming fiscal year. Myself, the public defender, Judge Stevens and Judge Shirley gave a presentation on this particular policy. Nothing has changed since then. The only thing that's changed is that, uh, we had planned on providing this to the Indigent Defense Commission at the last possible moment. But then, uh, felt like maybe we should provide it to the Indigent Defense Commission a little earlier, so that we could make alterations if necessary.
So this is basically what we're doing now and what was discussed in the.
Correct, yep.
The budget. Motion to approve the plan to provide indigent services, indigent defense services in Persian County. Sent to the Indigent Defense Commission.
It's a lot of mouthful. I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you for putting it together.
That Shirley did all of it.
Well, well, thank you.
I shuffle the paperwork around.
Okay, no Karen Stevens. Jerry out. We have. A few minutes before eleven o'clock. Okay.
A few. Depending on your questions.
Yeah.
Uh, the only update I have is, uh, we have, uh, inmates in custody in our dispatch upgrade is about ninety-eight percent complete right now. So, um, looking better, or do you remember in there last week or two weeks ago?
Yeah, it's nice to see.
Yeah, technology, when technology works, it's a good thing.
Yeah, when it works.
When I have to call Justin two weeks in a row on Friday evening to come in and fix this, not a good thing.
Yeah, Justin doesn't like that.
No, he doesn't. I don't like calling him either. I, I try to troubleshoot as much as I can before I call him, but.
Yeah.
Um, so it's, uh, it's been a good improvement, uh, so far, so. And then all, the only other thing I have is, oh, I will be out of town most of the day tomorrow, because I do have a cadet graduating the academy.
Good, great.
So.
That's another thing.
Yes, very good.
Mr. You just have one resign?
What's that? Yeah, yeah, and that's, uh, that's one of the requests on the, specific request on the agenda, so.
Yeah.
So I just have the other three things that are specific on the agenda. I really like that panel room. Unless you have any questions about the sheriff's office as a whole.
Actually, I do.
Okay.
Um, in your upgrade for dispatch. Sierra Electronics has upgraded, added more equipment to on peak.
They've updated some, yes.
Yes. But they've, uh, installed, updated, whatever, more stuff off of your fiber line that comes from the. But they've uh, installed, updated, whatever, more stuff off of your fiber line that comes from the other building. You're not aware of that?
No.
Yeah, they have.
I didn't realize we had a fiber line. I knew we had a line with uh, Dave Metz.
That's, that's what I'm talking.
Yeah, for our back going up to the Black Rock, but I wasn't aware that they.
So they have connected to that box.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, to, for the dispatch stuff. I'm just was trying to get my head around what they did.
I would have to specifically ask. I don't know. It may be, because what we were trying to do was two separate things. Um, that we're going to have to separate out further um, to, because one of the, on the building fund, one of the things was a radio upgrade. And so that's probably a part of that radio upgrade, because that's our radio repeater up there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So probably it's.
Clarification.
Yeah, when they, so when they went up there for the new dispatch upgrade, because it's I P based now, instead of just antenna based, they had to update some of the system up there. So that it could take that load.
Yeah.
So and whether, I didn't know it had anything to do with Metz's building, but I can.
It's off of that line that comes over. I just.
Might just be more throughput, I'm not sure.
Okay.
But I can ask, have an answer for you next time.
But, yeah. Okay, so we have a, a request for approval. For the sheriff to sign a E I T S.
What state?
Yeah, for a four-year contract or a rack space renewal for repeater equipment on one of them.
Yes.
So I have a question to D A. I mean, should that be signed by the chair? Mission, the contracts instead of by the sheriff? I'm, I'm asking.
So.
And nothing against you signing it, I'm just.
Yeah, I think that Jerry and I communicated about that and uh. If I recall correctly, I had asked, would that be changed? Um, however, the board can also authorize the sheriff to sign that. So county officials can't buy the county unless the board specifically authorizes that going to do it. Authorize the sheriff to sign that contract and authorize the sheriff to sign it. Uh, you want to sign it, that the chair should sign it. My advice is that the chair should probably be signing all of these contracts. So that's, you don't lose track of. Officials, the board has authorized to sign, which, which decided contracts are authorized.
Well, and also too, to make sure that the comp, signed contracts get to Lacy's office and where they need to go.
Yeah.
I actually need a copy of the contract too, because there is a schedule in the budget where we have to just go annually.
I don't remember if I signed the last one or not, I, I couldn't tell you.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm, nothing against you. I'm just more comfortable with all contracts being signed by the chair.
I agree, that's fine. So just let me know when I can.
All it is, is just the um, the rack, our repeater up on one of my mountain. That's just the rack space for the state. Because we don't own our own building up there, so we have to get.
It's same as rack space up there.
Yeah.
And then the printers too, that's the second one. Or cop, is it copier?
It's uh, mo, they're multi-function printer, copier, scanners.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're just in, pretty much into life, the ones we have.
Yes.
And the new ones are going to save us a little bit of money, not a lot, but every penny helps.
Well, no, we're everything.
Yeah, they'll have more functionality.
On the contract that I have, there's not a spot specifically for the, it doesn't say sheriff.
Was it saying sheriff?
Commissioner Shane?
Do what?
Do you have one different?
No, 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 but he's asking for permission and I'm just saying that.
Oh, okay, I see.
I'm just saying that the chair should be signing.
Yeah.
Contracts, that's all. No, I wasn't looking at what was on the contract thing. And then nothing against you, Jerry. I mean, you're perfectly capable.
It'll take a whole lot more net to hurt my feelings. It'll take a lot more net, but I appreciate that.
Do you, do you want a motion for the advertising and hiring of the deputy area?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
I will second.
Uh, motion in a second for approval to hire a new deputy. All those in favor?
Aye.
I lost one last week, so.
How many openings do you have then? Just one or two?
Well, depends on the county. So, I, I, in the past, I've said we've been five positions down. We've had three vacancies and two uninjured. Now I still have one that's injured that I can't really.
Do anything.
Fill his position or get anybody to work on that position. So right now, this only vacancy I have in this budget here is this one.
Okay.
For a deputy, and then you guys have already approved for the admin positions, so.
Okay, so going back, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I have motion back. So the deputy that just left, is he already gone?
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah, he's already started his new job.
Yeah. Anybody in the wings to fill in?
We do have one left out of our last testing, um, that we have completed the background and all that. Now, they'll, they'll have to submit to a medical polygraph, all that stuff before we can do, or as part of a condition.
Yeah.
Yes, we do have one left out of our last testing. That's still within a year, so.
Yeah, okay, very good.
That one deputy head is post in July, right?
Uh, possibly three, potentially three. So I may be pulling nicer than the jail.
Yeah.
But that'll be good to have them through post.
Yes.
Yes, yes. And while they've been in post, we've been in F T O on them, so we're halfway done with those F T O programs.
Oh, that's great.
Pretty nice, yeah. So.
Okay.
So you need me to get you those contracts or will you go off the contracts you have in your package? Because those, I just made, I just scanned in copies of those, because he just emailed them.
So the rack space contract just says less than signature. And then as far as printer or what, I don't have the original in front of me, so.
I, I. Okay, I just forwarded the email.
Get Karen a clean copy.
Okay. I can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mister Wagner, come on in.
So as far as I'm concerned, you're still Judge Wagner.
Well, I still bear a tire, I'm a retired judge. But uh, like to tell you, I appear before you after forty years of having my civil rights finally restored. Bryce knows that district attorneys and judges have rules of ethics and you lose your civil rights while you're in office. You can't speak out on public matters and so forth.
Yeah.
Well, and here's the question.
That's over with?
Yeah. So, okay, we've talked about what you're uh, trying to do so you can fill us in.
Okay, you want to kick this over? Commissioners to look at here. About two or three weeks ago. A gentleman came to my. Myself and my daughter, Wendy. And. We've known him, his name is Patrick Hickey. He's a private, private contractor and uh. He's. Over the project at Core, the new pad. Rather than core employees doing that, they hired him as being the operator of the whole job. And he in turn directs all of his private contractors. And he indicated to us that as a going away president, that he'll be going away soon. He would like to leave the community with the idea that they would, without cost, clean up the fire mess that's been here for a year and a half. And wanted to know if we were interested in trying to do that. And said, yes. Not sure, we said it should have said yes, but.
Yeah.
The process involved a luminous number of contacts and meetings with people. And uh. I wa, I want to make sure everyone understands I'm not here to decide what's been done after this time. All I'm saying is, it's time that we finally lay this one to rest. And uh. He told me he was ashamed to bring his people in, living in the community of this mess, and he really wanted to see it cleaned up. So began the process of uh. Figuring out how to put this together. And since our time, we've been working madly to. Bring together all the players that need to happen here to get this done. As we speak, Mister Hickey is uh, meeting with the private companies that work on that project. Uh, I've been asked whether Core is a part of this. They emailed me a statement they want me to read. For the record, here's what they've said. Core Rochester is a strong supporter of the Love Lock community. We will be looking into ways we can help to repair slash reestablish the property for future use. Following the demolition and debris removal phase. So. That's their position and what they've offered here and I'd be glad to certainly look at that. And uh, we could use all the help we can do.
So do you have agreements that are signed now by the property owners?
We do.
Okay, so the, there's no liability to the contractor or anything?
Well, let me start off. I've collaborated with the district attorney where we've taken contracts. My experience over the years is, there's not enough paper in the world to keep dishonest people honest. These are two-page simple contracts and uh, they've been signed. And there are two separate contracts. We have those in our possession and going forward with that, we have a good relationship with everybody that's a part of that.
No, no.
I think that's.
I appreciate Judge Wagner spearheading this effort. I don't think it will come about, but for his uh, effort also, the efforts of his star.
Yeah.
What we've done, this chart in front of you kind of shows what's happened. As you realize, you folks paid for the first cleanup. On the first lot of Mister Yanis. Mister Yanis is a businessman. In Reno, he paid a hundred thousand dollars for that lot. And then ended up with all the debris.
Yeah.
It got cleaned up and the, the county crew did a tremendous job. But we watched that and wondered why we can't get the rest of it cleaned up. And it's a difficult thing. I'm not being critical, but believe me, I spent a lot of hours on trying to make sure we could put together everything here. Anyway, um. I've met with various county employees. I've been out with this. No, the interface is a place out there that doesn't make for this material to be taken.
Do you have, you have a site or a place where you want them to bring this to? Is that what you?
Right.
The fact that it can be taken out there, as you know, had to do with environmental factors, no person to put that out there.
Heidi.
Heidi. Thank you, Heidi.
We were really close to get what's done with N D E P and the contractor in our negotiations with one of the family members stalled out. Um, Friday, uh, two Fridays ago. It was uh, N D E P and that contractor Brad Ben stepped back.
Uh.
And said that they would not.
Oh geez.
Um, and you know, maybe this is a blessing in disguise, you know, and obviously we have a lot of support that Mr. Wagner and this is uh, Nelson have. But I mean, we were real close.
Well.
And the reports happening to the contractor.
And there's no asbestos or?
All the environmental's are turned over to the contractor, they can put. N D E P has told me that the waste could go up to our.
Okay, and that's.
But that is, I mean, they're looking at it, but they're. And he will have a conversation with the contractors to take a question.
Yeah, so I mean, you, you've talked about this, and one of the issues is waiving the fees to bring it to them. And I, the way I have seen it is if in-depth contractor was bringing it up, we would waive the fees anyway. Am I speaking out of line?
I, I don't know. I'm pretty sure you're interested about that.
Yeah.
That was one of the reasons of N D E P stepping in.
Yeah.
Because of it being demolition, uh, you don't get a lot back. Since the approach is very across divisions, so that, that airspace loss is there.
Yeah.
It's not coming back. Uh, and I was, I was under the impression, like this was a parent beginning of it, that those costs avoided because of buying that contract. And I was, I don't think there was ever even saw the.
It wasn't.
Right. That you said, that's uh, you guys, I'm going to give you my opinion.
Yeah, I want to hear.
And then we should charge. We're running at a deficit up there. We're in the red.
What are we looking at? What, what kind of fee would it be?
I believe between three and it's kicked it around. I didn't have time to go actually measure that.
No, but just a ballpark.
We're thinking between five and ten thousand bucks.
Wow.
Well, closer to five.
And Heidi, N E, N D E P, they did have some money put aside. Would they be willing to pay the dump fees? But we could ask.
Yeah, you could ask, but I.
So we could go forward and approve waiving the fees to get this cleaned up, but requesting N D E P.
Request to be reimbursed.
To be, if we could be reimbursed from them, because they were going to pay.
Yeah, everything was going to be paid for, but I don't know.
No, I know, and you can't commit to that.
Yeah.
Dan, you have a question? I'm coming.
Like you said, that's if you guys weigh the fees or not, but I, I actually don't, just the way you do was said back.
Well, we have a motel too that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The thing is, if my house were a job, I wouldn't expect the government to pay for it, not for me.
Yeah, Jerry Brown told me the same thing.
I can't imagine why you should count how far this is in the ever. I think it should go back to land. It's great, they're getting cleaned up for free.
Yeah.
And they paid the fees. It's got, it's only a fraction of the money.
Okay, so what?
Why can't we put a, a genetic.
That's a credible intent. So we can, as you just, as you just mentioned, we can approve uh. Going forward with the project and then whatever that fee is, we can come back. One is to ask in-depth if uh, if their contract is, if they can pay that. And if not, then we can go back on the landlords to collect that money.
The agreements that you, that they have signed, is there any issue with that if we were to lean?
They're not agreeing to pay any of the fees.
Uh-huh, that's what I was.
I've approached that in fact, and one of the things I did with Mister Plimpton is, we took some electrical panels off the back of there. See if they could be sold. It's probably a couple of two or three thousand dollars in pounds.
No, yeah.
You know, and I'm looking for ways to try to do that. This is the last piece of this puzzle. And if you don't approve it.
It's going to sit there like that forever.
Oh, yeah.
It's done. I mean, it's virtually the last piece and you have no idea at this point.
Well, I think we can also ask the mines if they would help contribute to the cost. We could ask a GoFundMe page. I mean, at this point, people are tired of seeing that mess.
Yeah, and I, I want to have you look at it because of the precedent here. I don't believe in setting bad precedents, but here's the other side of that coin. Somebody comes and burns down your house and then they come along and declare it to be a public nuisance. And then they come and pick with local government, whatever that is. And then they clean it up and then they come and take your property because somebody burned down the property. Something's wrong with that picture as well.
Yeah.
So it needs to be funded, I understand that. Dump fees are there for a reason. Part of the problem is. Um, the structure of these, twenty dollars a cubic yard. If it's not separated, if it is separated, it's five dollars a cubic yard. Take a look at this motel down there. It's mainly, it's mainly metal hooked on the wood. What do you think's going to happen there?
They're going to hold it all off.
And it'd be twenty. And it'd be twenty dollars a cubic yard for all of that because these guys aren't gonna be separating that out.
No.
Probably have a couple thousand screws holding that metal in the wood, so. All, all I'm saying is at some point it would be well to take a look at some of the fairness of the community, try to deal with that issue. And I, on individuals, I, I had the same problem, right? Pulled back on this project early on because it was falling totally upon the on the public and so forth. And I think people should pay their fair share.
Well, I believe that the landowners should probably have paid something or had their insurance companies pay something. It's not, and not leave it for the community to clean up.
I agree. We're here a year and a half later. It hasn't been.
Correct. And we're still where we're at. So now is the time to do something about it. But some responsibility does fall on the landowners. Well, and I believe that some of them did get insurance money too that they could have put towards dump fees or whatever, so. But if we don't approve this, that's gonna be there for a lifetime. Yes. My lifetime anyway.
So, so the other part of this is water for dust control.
Well, I'll explain to you what has to happen. Drafted this back in Congress so that you can see. In order to clean this property, first thing I'm gonna have to do, I've got permission from Mr. Yanis that we can use his lot in order to pull all of the debris onto that site and load trucks and everything in the alleyway. The reason it has to be that way is that I've been in touch with NDOT and they said they don't want trucks loaded on the pavement.
And that's the way we did do the other cleaning.
We did, and that could be done, so. We have that permission to do that. With the understanding, when we get done, we're gonna need to put some gravel back on where they used that. Part of the problem cleaning up Mr. Plimpton's property is that there's a crawl space. We don't know how deep that is. And these large machines that they're bringing in. This is a window of a couple of weeks when these will be available. After that, they won't be here in the community. When they bring in that and use that to haul out the debris, they're gonna have to pull it out, load the trucks, and then have filter available there where they can fill in where the crawl space may be. There's probably some pretty good holes underneath that. You can't just fill it all with gravel. So we're gonna have to have the ability to have filter as they go and pull it from the east to the west, all the way down to this thing. The understanding with the Murphys is that we would come within six feet of their building. We do not intend to try to pull down the building at all that they call this old bank building. They believe that it's, was it, was it an old mint building or some historical thing? I don't know. I'm not gonna get into that discussion, but we've agreed we'd come within six feet. And that they would have the right to have somebody there on-site, one person to direct. What more they want to take away, they'll have to be very careful to pull it away from that building. They've indicated at this point, they don't wish to exercise that right, that they will trust us to go ahead and do it appropriately. Part of the hardest part of this whole job is on, on the backside of the Murphy property. It looks like an old western with this brick corner up at the end.
Yeah.
That's gonna be real tricky because it's connected on to the, the building. But that's gonna have to come down at some point. This, this is not a simple operation by any means. We've had a contact and we have USA that's lined out everything, all the utilities. We know that there's a gas line along the back line. We have asked the city where the sewer lines are. They're not sure, but I have a real good idea that if it into the back, there's a manhole cover behind Mr. Plimpton's property. And it appears that the sewer lines are coming there. But I don't want it to happen is for them to go in and start lifting up all these old cast iron lines, pulling up sidewalks and other things.
Yeah.
So this is, well, it's a major undertaking. It's gotta be done with some delicacy and with people that really understand what the issues are. Talked to the water district. They're willing to provide water. We'll, we'll have to do dust abatement and so Rusty's assured us that he can fill up whatever we need for water trucks.
Let's see.
Gravels and.
Pardon?
Gravel. Yes. When we get done, we're gonna say we don't want three feet of gravel. We want to be able to use enough gravel to get these lots so that they're like we, the county did the first one in that way. The sheriff has been really good in coordinating. They'll be doing traffic control. We don't know exactly what days. We, we were all shooting for Sunday, but some of the contractors with some of their equipment saying they might wanna move it up to Saturday instead of Sunday. So we kind of have an open couple of days, but that's coming up fast and hard where we need to have all of this worked out. I believe we've contacted all the necessary utilities and companies that are involved in any way here. And have written documents to cover every bit of the operation. If you have individual questions about what you see here, please tell me. Because this has not been a simple endeavor in any fashion. And it won't be for a little while until we get this cleaned up. My, my suggestion is, is that if you would waive the fees on a temporary basis and give us the opportunity to seek other funds to, because we don't really know what that is at this point. You know, that could be a
Yeah.
a crazy number. Between five and twenty dollars a cubic yard is a huge difference between those.
So I didn't want to see us waive fees. However, I'd like to get this project approved to go to work. We don't have a contract with these people. How do we go back? Cause we, one, we can go back and ask for donations to help us offset that cost. After we do however many loads, we'll know what that cost is. Then we can take it from there.
Yeah, I, I just want to advise the board that the possibility of getting a mechanic's lien. If an owner consents to, doesn't have to consent, consents by agreement for another entity to come on and clean up their property. And then later on, the entity who cleaned the property comes back and files a mechanic's lien that wasn't in their agreement, that's probably not gonna stand up.
Yeah, we're not gonna be able to do that. So.
As far as the labor issue, I, I think that the board has the discretion to move forward in good faith and say, look, this has been a problem in our community for eighteen months. Certain things didn't happen that shouldn't have happened. Like insurance on the property, like maybe an abatement procedure after a nuisance declaration. And then a cleanup and then a lien on the property. That would have been the proper procedure. But that didn't happen. But to go back, the board can in good faith, I think, move forward and say, we're gonna help out the community with the expectation these dump paid, these dump fees are gonna be paid, whether it's through private donations, whether it's through like Commissioner Shane said, approaching the lines.
Or NDEP first.
More NDEP. I mean, there's money available for it. There's also the potential to sell some of the assets on that property. Judge Wagner had mentioned that there's big utility boxes there that.
It could go toward that.
The risk is over a matter of five thousand dollars. The board's saying, no, we're not gonna do it because we want to get paid. And then this dump sits in the middle of town for another eighteen months.
I think we're all tired of that dump.
So I'll, I'll, oh, sorry.
Well, I'm involved in the, the chicken area issue. No part of this law. What about the second block related behind that?
Maybe one third.
That's where you go always, where it's okay. I was just curious about that, the three, three in that building.
Well, and we have to worry about all the utilities. There's still the gas line down there.
Right. Gas, gas company pulled out the meters and I know they have to line, but I know.
Yeah, but there's still a line behind it too there. Which means, if that's not a barrier, then we have to go on the ground to destroy it. But those, that gas line still is down all the way down. And there's a, the gas company was there this morning. They put a trap in the place there. That's where the terms are.
Without the provision of waiving the fee.
Yes.
So yeah, I just wanted to make sure what all we were getting from that.
Yes.
Oh, those figures I gave you, that's based on five bucks a cubic yard.
Okay.
I, I just seriously doubt that we're gonna, we're gonna worry about this separation of these on this one first coming.
Yeah.
We're all committed to cleaning this up too, by the way. I'm not trying to throw much wrenches, but like I said, the rest of it's.
Yeah. We just need to be able to keep track and figure out what the cost really is.
And I'll be charged with lack of, we're running at a deficit, that's why.
Yeah.
That's why I took that position.
Well, you're being. Yeah. No, you're being prudent with, with everything. No, that's good.
But you're gonna run into this on all of these, particularly these arson fires. Some arsonist comes in and burns down people's property and then we're gonna, what? Punish it by taking away the property because somebody burned it down? I mean, we, we need to look at, at a longer view and it needs to be dealt with. Because each one of these is gonna come along with the same kind of issues, you know?
That's why many states require, when you have an improved property, you have to insure it.
That's right. We don't have.
If you don't insure it for liability, you have to have arson buyer insurance. Same with that.
So when you're by ours. I do too, yeah.
But also
That on ours.
I think we don't. I think we're where we need to be.
Yeah, okay. I'm ready for your motion.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and make a motion that we go ahead and approve allowing the removal of the fire debris for the three parcels on Main Street to be put at the dump. And that we pursue funding in some way to help offset those dump fees such as NDEP, private donations, going to the mines, you know, whatever. But this is something after eighteen months needs to be accomplished. Also for the county to help with the gravel and any other ways that we can assist with the cleanup. I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you and Wendy for everything, because I know this wasn't easy with working with particular landowners or property owners. And I agree with you, Dan, on the, the fees and stuff, and we'll do everything we can to offset once we have that figure from you. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll try to do the best we can and get it done.
You're gonna do an awesome job. I'm not worried about that.
Yeah.
As long as that stuff is clear. We have a whole letter from NDEP before the process changed.
Yeah.
And we've not gone home, if it's possible, we can have a letter.
I think, do you have a copy?
I don't need the whole letter.
But she's.
I just need a letter that says, NDEP said it was okay for us to take.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll send it to you.
Okay.
Sure. She's pretty set to us. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. At least I'm able to complete that, but our conversations with the family just.
Listen.
No, no, thank you for studying and helping with negotiations. We were real close since then, but the negotiations failed.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody's done a great job. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you all.
Thanks. Okay, number seven on the agenda is updated on progress of site location. Law enforcement center, no report. Proclamation and awards. Done. Grass Valley Advisory Board.
Hey, Paul.
No great report other than the fact that we have a very heavy dust patch of the level it's rising from the property to south of the transportation. Which is been a problem all the way around. It brought up west. I don't know that direction. I can see plumes of dust going up to my place. Quite concerned. And along with the dust, I had a comment a while back. Somebody asked about maintenance statements in roads. They didn't get your permit. They bring it up through the roads. But I ran across something that I think it worth considering. And I made up a folder of information. I'll ask them how to review.
My friend.
Thank you.
Basically, what it is, it's in enzyme trees and roads, there's two copies from. Works to solidify the road and cut the dust, make its cost down. It just went to go and ran it for a while, but we wouldn't report.
Great.
The other thing is a reminder that our May, Grass Valley, we're meeting will be on the twenty-fourth. By 11:30.
And Commissioner Rackley said he'd be there.
Yeah.
On the dust, on the dust issue, did you talk to Carl about that?
I mentioned it to him and I had no feedback.
Okay. Because I think that people thought that perhaps the conservation district could assist with that in some way or something. Or the farm hero or whatever.
It leave, uh, I can't explain and understand why they're doing so much grading and moving. Because all that is detrimental
to the soil.
To the soil as far as having anything to deal with.
It's a farm. Yeah, and they're constantly grading.
They've been grading and tilling and regrading and tilling and occasionally putting a little bit of water down, but raising dust amount of movement.
Are they trying?
In first, I will, they haven't done any, they haven't really eaten any.
Yeah, we're not sure.
Do you have a question?
We have someone identified as Carl.
Oh, Clinger.
On Grass Valley stuff?
Hello.
Hello.
This is Carl Clinger, Big Meadow Conservation District.
Hi, Carl.
I've visited the site. And basically, and I've spoke with the main person that was complaining about the dust. I've visited the site a couple of times. The dust that I see there, if it was in lower valley, would be ignored. It's, it's pretty small, but then if the wind comes up, I'm sure it can get pretty dusty to the south. There's three pivots there that the landowner has been ripping for several months, which on the surface seems quite excessive. But what he's been doing, and I haven't talked to the landowner, I talked, I, I didn't, I just talked to the person that was complaining. But driving by the facility and looking, there is a huge pile of rocks. And, and they've been ripping thirty inches deep, trying to pull those rocks to the surface and move them off to a corner. So what they're doing in some regards is very reasonable. They're trying to improve their fields. Also, they're converging. Also, they're converting from pivots, it appears, to hand lines to do vegetables. And they're starting to sprinkle along the edges. I don't know if they're aware of the dust complaints, but they're actually moving forward to reducing the dust issue. The ground, yes, has been pulverized tremendously. Uh, there's still a few rocks in it that they need to haul off. Uh, I doubt that one could even drive a pickup through it because the soil is so soft. I have spoke with NRCS to inquire if, if that was highly erodible soil, if that would be a violation. Christie's still looking at that. But even if it was a violation of highly erodible soil, basically what they do is give you a year to make it right. So there's, I don't think there's a lot that the conservation district can do other than continue to monitor the situation, possibly talk to the landowner and encourage them to proceed a little more rapidly with sprinkling around the perimeter to reduce the dust.
Thank you, Carl, because that'll help answer the question for the people in Grass Valley, though. That's great. Thank you.
Yes.
Anything else, Paul? Good job. Thank you. And I'll see you in a minute. We have an, an eleven-thirty appointment.
It's eleven-thirty.
It's almost, yeah, it's a little after. Come on, come on now. How are you today?
I'm good. How are you guys?
Okay.
Everyone gets one.
Oh, good.
I always like when I get to deliver good news.
I know, I've heard.
They're very exciting.
I never hear good news.
Hi.
Yeah.
Never ever.
When we give our insurance.
Yeah.
That's the good news?
Yes.
Yeah, that you all get a packet.
The good news would be what's contained in the packet.
Oh, it is.
It is. More to come.
Okay.
See, that's why it says Persian Commissioner meeting Wednesday at eleven-thirty. Here I am. I've been in Winnebago. And I'm going back.
I'm going.
So, good news, you all get a rate pass this year.
Which is awesome.
Which is awesome because last year we did not have good news and it was very upsetting, especially during COVID when I couldn't even come here. So I'm hoping that we're running well, we're running well right now, that we continue to run well this year, that you will be my only group probably this year that will run well. And that we can get a decrease next year and get things kind of back on track.
That would be awesome. But the fact there's no increase is
Yeah.
great.
Yeah, every, everything is going to stay the same. I'm excited about that. Um, and we have a new member of our team, so Lisa Schremer, she was actually my hometown health representative. She's now working with us. So it's nice to have someone who has carrier representation on our team as well. So hopefully we'll come up with some good ideas. And this next year, we're certainly gonna go out to bid with everybody because everybody wants your business. So Anthem and.
Good. Um, that's better than that one.
Yes, right. That's what I'm hopeful for. So we'll go out to bid this next year with Anthem and you know, obviously hometown help will come in with their renewal for next year. And then there's other carriers as well. Prominence wants the business back. So and there's lots going on. I'll just mention this, in Reno right now, there's a lot of fighting between Renown and the other carriers and contracts. I'm sure you've seen on the news where they're not renewing contracts like with United Healthcare. So we'll have to definitely keep an eye on that. And I heard just today on my way here from Winnebago, there's no discussions about them with Carson Tahoe Health, that they're not gonna renew a contract with them either. So as long as you guys are all fine at renew, this next year will be good. Do you have any questions for me?
No, that's fantastic.
I like the zeros.
Don't you like, well, I like the negatives myself, but I'm gonna take the zeros this year. And you guys are, again, thank you so much for working with us. You're my favorite group because you guys are just nice and reasonable. I don't get that a lot in my line of work.
Well, you've been great. Your whole team has been wonderful.
We just, we just care about you guys. Well, you know, I care about definitely rural Nevada, so that's my focus.
So do we still need to do a motion since there's no change? Yep. So if you're ready, I'll make a motion that we accept the insurance renewal for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two and note that there's no increases at all.
I will second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor?
Thank you. And I'm back to Winnebago.
Good job.
Did you bring cookies? You didn't bring cookies?
No, I can tell you what, though. I can bring them on Thursdays, tomorrow Thursday, on my drive-by.
That's between you and Karen.
On my drive-by.
Bring it into my house.
I will, I'll bring them. I'll make, my cantrip can make them and I leave Winnebago tomorrow and then I'll drive by because I do like, I'm your Russian, too.
Okay, goodbye. Okay, next thing is Derby Field Airport. Really nothing to report. Lacy had a contact and we're working on an issue there. We'll work on that. TV Advisory Board, we have a contract from Ballet TV who is our technical person for his annual renewal contract.
Is he getting close to retiring?
Yes.
I was hoping it was gonna be a three-year contract or something.
No, because he, and we've talked about it a lot. Uh, he doesn't know when, but we know it's coming sometime. Uh, the interesting thing was last week, week before last, I was up on the mountain with Channel Five. They actually, two people came up, the one person that I've worked with for a couple of years. But he had another individual with him who was a, a person that's relocated to Reno. And he does this kind of stuff. So we have somebody in the weeks. We'll see.
That's great.
But anyway, I'm ready for a motion for approval of contract.
I'll make the motion to approve the contract agreement with Ballet TV Communications July first, twenty-twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. And I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion back. I will get, get this signed and get Lacy so you can have a copy of it. Board appointments.
I don't think we have any.
I don't know, any? Care spending. We have apparently a bunch of money coming our way.
We do. And it's really hard to, it doesn't look like they've opened it up enough that we could really use it for a lot of different things. But I heard Sean Burke's suggestion
Yes.
for medical response and ambulance and those things would fit under there. There's broadband, but um, when I listened to a presentation from the National NACO, they said, hold off a little bit on the broadband.
Yeah.
Because there's more things coming for broadband. They're not saying, don't do it. They're just saying, be aware. And this funding, my understanding is it's, we get half and half. So we get half of it one year and half for the next following fiscal year. It's a two-year. And. But we need like the Emily Water System. Yes. Updated. Our, the, the water tower.
The other thing we don't want to overlook, and it's addressed in here, is we had projected loss of revenue. So we canceled or postponed the Ryapatch Fire Department or Building Expansion. And under way, I read this, we can now start that process again.
And those are things that we.
It's in there, so you can.
So it, the funding is supposed to come anytime, but it's effective July one. You can't do anything before that. And then once we NACO, my NACO meeting is tomorrow and they're gonna talk about this again. So if I get a little more clarification on stuff, I'll let you know.
That'd be good. I'd like to get that process started again for Ryapatch because that, just as the process takes a couple of months.
I would like all of us to, to get together and, like, in an open meeting and, and discuss.
And discuss projects.
Yes. Well, and I was hoping that at the department head meeting, that we could, as commissioners, meet with the department heads too. And talk about this and what might be needed that we're not aware of. But the tw- it's the twenty-fourth, you're gonna be gone. Right?
Plus, that would have to be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Agenda is right. So.
You can only have one of us there.
Yeah. But what, what I think we need to do, I agree with you. We can have an open meeting where we talk about it and hear proposals too.
Yeah.
From department heads in different places.
Yeah.
And then make up a list like we did before of the priorities and, and go from there.
Look, take, look at the option tax as well and take some of the things that are supposed to be funded by the option tax. Pay for those with COVID and then divert the option.
Right. Yeah.
Not take out of option tax, but take out of.
Right. Use the option tax for something else.
Well, yeah, for, we could do it for vehicles too, for the sheriff's department if that's, you know, was agreeable. There's a lot of things.
So you're gonna find out more tomorrow?
Hopefully tomorrow, yes.
Okay.
And whatever I find out, I, I will pass on to Karen so she can let you know.
Okay.
But I don't know. Do you want that on the next agenda?
I think we should.
I think we should on the next agenda. So that we can start discussing.
Yes. And then we can go from there if we.
Right, right. And we can talk about prioritizing what
Yes.
what we want to spend this money on.
Exactly. I think it should come.
And then we can go to a public meeting after that.
I think it really does need to be tracked. And it needs to be very specific.
Oh, yeah.
Just as all the hassle I had with this care pack that I've already received.
Yeah.
It has. So it is a nightmare. It needs to be very.
Well, now that you've done the first one here, you have a better idea of how to handle this one too. You know, as far as the bookkeeping.
And this is my responsibility.
Well, yeah, as far as the well, as far as.
As far as tracking expenses.
And paying the. I mean, but is this so, is as specific as the last one? I didn't read it to be. It's, it's narrowed. But, but for the revenue loss, we actually have to document why we feel we've had a revenue loss for different things. I mean, it didn't sound like it was gonna be an easy thing. The other, I don't know if we could put money in here too for, like we did before, for your department to, for the, all the extra work, because we were able to do that before. And I just don't know that yet. And I was hoping the guidelines from the treasury would be better than they were. They still were vague, aren't they? Yes, very vague. So I'm hoping that.
Well, isn't the NACO Nevada supposed to be trying to come up with better guidelines?
Right. And we have, our meeting tomorrow includes that. So I'm hoping that they have a better line by line kind of thing.
Okay, so you'll give us some more information on this?
I will. And did we want to talk about this?
Well, that's not on here. So, so we have a, a new sign for our bill beams. And really what it says is mask, mask requirement, fully vaccinated masks are not required. Unvaccinated, if you're unvaccinated, masks are recommended. And it shows an updated because of the CDC, May thirteenth, two oh two one update. I don't think so. I think it should just, and this isn't on the agenda, that our buildings, this, this could, this can and should be for all of our buildings.
So I wonder, are you gonna require that they produce their vaccination?
Yeah, we can't do that.
You can't, yeah, you can't ask that. I actually, just for that reason.
I have mine on my phone.
I did too. I'm, I'm going to Utah tomorrow. When it's on my phone, somebody asks.
But legally, we can't ask that question.
No, you cannot.
You can't, you can't.
You're not sharing that information with other people. You're requesting it for yourself. If not.
It's not a violation. But, but this is the concern. It's not on the agenda.
Right.
And the board's deliberated toward a decision.
Right.
Isn't it something?
That's what I keep saying. This is not on the agenda.
So let's get it on the next agenda and then the board can decide. As of right now, under directive forty-two or forty-five or fifty-six or whatever directive it is, Nevada has to follow the CDC guidelines. And the CDC guidelines are, if you're vaccinated, you wear a mask. If you're not vaccinated, then excuse me, if you're vaccinated, if you don't need a mask, if you're unvaccinated, then you need a mask.
Then you need a mask. Simple as that. Okay.
What were you gonna say, Commissioner Shane? Sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna say that also too, though, it would depend on the department and what they're comfortable with, is what I was thinking.
I'm just being asked a question from various departments as to
what.
signage. We didn't have an agenda item that said, put up the signage in the beginning, so. I personally asked Dr. Van Hilder because I knew it wasn't on the agenda at first. And she told me that to leave my file. You just.
And for right now, without, you can talk about it at the department meeting too, on the twenty-fourth, get some input, but we can't do anything.
But we still need direction from.
And we can't do that until the next.
No. So it's not on the agenda. So moving on. Litigation.
Yes.
Yes. We are in recess for litigation. General Counsel.
So Tom Adams from the distillery, I had a conversation with him last week. And I asked him to contact Heidi and also the mayor, blah, blah. Let them know that he was not concerned about the residential situation that we have with no property. I also asked him to let me know when would be a good time for him to come and tour the Wainell facility. And he said that he would contact me in the near future. So that's where we're at. The difficulty is gonna be when I try to contact the occupants of the Wainell property and arrange that tour because they don't answer my phone calls. So, yeah. You know, as far as the mask situation, the CDC requirements, what the requirements are in Nevada. The sign that was talked about, that goes contrary to what the current state of things are in Nevada. The CDC recently said that if you're vaccinated, you don't have to wear a mask in most public or private locations. If you're unvaccinated, then you do need to wear a mask. And that sign says masks are recommended. So it's kind of going to contrary.
I just, I just put that.
Right.
Yeah.
If I need to.
But that's my concern. The concern is if it's going against it, it needs to be on the agenda and it needs to be deliberated towards a decision. Because it changes from the status. That's exactly what, that's what the status is. I would just put, I would say exactly
What the CDC said.
What the CDC said because that's what Nevada follows. And then in terms of asking employees and things like that, whether they have their magic vaccination. And then in terms of asking employees and things like that, whether they have their magic vaccination cards. Employers can ask their employees to demonstrate that, that they have been vaccinated. It's not against the law. It's not a recommendation, I'm just saying that. That's all I have.
So, report the admissions.
I'm still working on BDRs, that is still coming in. Justice Court. District Attorney's Office, Sheriff's Office. Bill. Fourth twenty-four, I believe it was, on the pre-trial. But just so you know, we did get that handled upon a. A late submission. Prior to the. I see two more today, so still peeling up on those. And then I'll be sitting down and I'll do the copy notes this afternoon, what I'm reading on Monday. Various topics. On. Safety is another.
Okay, thank you. Items for future agendas. Anything that pops up that we haven't already talked about? Hearing none, correspondence? I have a suggestion, we have a one o'clock. Interview and then a one-twenty interview, I'm suggesting we go into recess now and come back after the one o'clock to do vouchers.
That would be awesome.
So this meeting is in recess.
Thank you.
Are you ready? You okay over there, come over here? You're good. Okay, Toody, come on up, have a, come up here and have a seat. Oh, you turned the thing off, yeah. So we have a few questions that we'll ask you. And, yeah, but first off, tell us about yourself.
I'm a native Nivadan, was born in Reno and raised in Sparks. And I have some friends up here and came up to visit and. Then I got caught in that over thing and so I had to stay up there for a while. It was so nice and pleasant and quiet and I like that. So that's when I rented a small place from Aries out there. I just would like to stay, but I have to have some kind of extra job. I retired from the Nevada Department of Wildlife when. In two thousand twelve and I ended as an A administrative assistant for the entire western. Part of the state and. I did a lot of things, setting up commission meetings and. Doing a lot of of extra things. If there were other things that go wrong, I would go out and I had the offices out in Winnebago and. And the Reno office, of course, and then I also helped out in the Oakland, they had a few problems up there.
Are we alternating, are you gonna ask more?
No.
Okay.
Alternating.
All right, so we're alternating questions. What accomplishment are you most proud of?
I didn't make these up, okay? I don't know, I I would have to say my son, so.
That's a good one.
Yeah, and I know that doesn't mean anything here, but to me, I've got a great little grandson now. He's gone on three years old in September.
That's awesome.
Neat.
Awesome, okay.
So what computer and office skills do you have?
I've had. So, I had several skills, one, uh, different things. However, that is two thousand twelve when I quit and there was no Zoom then. I did set up. Telephone gatherings so we could talk to all the other things and I set up everything for the commission meetings and took. Took names and and got those in order for speaking and.
Yeah.
Things like that. I had a really good group that I worked with, cause it was mostly the biologist and then the people in. The boat, the desk and so forth and.
So did you use like office stuff, Word, Excel? Yeah, so good computer type stuff.
Yeah, I used it, but I I'd have to practice a little more to speed up things, so.
But you didn't use them.
Oh, yeah.
Did you use a calendar program or anything like?
Uh, no, we didn't.
Okay. Um, this is a customer service facility, the community center is what we're talking about. And will require good customer service skills. Tell us about a situation where you demonstrated good communication and customer service skills.
Well, I started out as a two in boat desk and. Was out there and my. Ford that was over me was sitting down, cause it was lunchtime and she was starting to let everybody go. And there, it was a massive run on the boat thing, cause the time and. This man walked in and he had not gotten what he thought he was supposed to have. And she was going to go get a warden to get him out because he was so bad and I said, just let me try. And so I sat down with with him and I was able to get him to calm down and. Didn't have to get the warden.
Good.
And she was very pleased with the outcome of it.
Okay, good. Sounds like my husband, he gets upset when he doesn't get what he wants.
Okay, throughout the year, there are several instances of large events back to back, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Especially during the holiday season, for example, turkey bingo, hospital long-term care policy or party. Crab feed, Lincoln Day breakfast, multiple grad parties, that kinda stuff. How do you ensure that there's adequate staff cleaning and setup between these events? How do you deal with storage shortages?
Storage, well, I would, I assume I would have to deal with it by doing, filling in myself and calling in. Whoever I could get to back me up, I'm not sure if you have what you have over there, or how many people you have there.
We have, we have buildings and grounds, so they they are at least available if if help is needed.
I'm willing to be there anytime on weekends, not kind of thrown out of, you know, not wanting the weekends off.
Yeah. Thank you.
This position will also require assisting with a setup and tear down after an event. Which is usually after a back event like was described. Will you be able to move tables and chairs along with vacuuming, mopping, cleaning restrooms and windows by yourself after the event?
By myself, probably not, I I would help and and definitely do that. But I've come to the point in my life that my doctors told me nothing over twenty-five pounds.
Okay. Thank you.
This position is not always an eight to five, money to buy the job. You'll be called on or text by renters, staff, sheriff's office or others. At all hours and 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 any day with questions such as. Any day with questions such as unable to get into the building, cannot lock door, unlock doors. Is that a problem, working with people?
What you think, so I hope this works.
How would you handle a confrontation with a person who is unhappy with a situation while renting at the community center? So let's say things weren't set up properly for them or. Things weren't clean or whatever, but they were unhappy with this, the service.
Well, I don't know how how it extends up here. If there was a problem, I I dealt with it with the manager. Leasing rooms, doing things like that. We had a little bigger commission and lasted a lot longer, so forth. I'm probably off of what you want, I'm I'm not, not so sure that.
I'm trying to think of an example. Can you think of an example?
So, so they've rented the building, it's one of the back-to-back type events. And then may have, let's say the kitchen even, so they may not think that the kitchen is cleaned enough for them to do their work. How do you handle that?
Well, it would depend how bad the kitchen is and what I'm able to get in. I would go ahead and try to to tell them that in, if they would give me some time. Few hours or something that I could get it straightened out myself. If it was a bigger mess than that, which it shouldn't be, I would have to get, if you've got a janitor or anybody there, they would have to help.
Okay, good, thank you. Explain the importance of confidential confidentiality in the workplace.
I think it's very important, I I don't like my, if I had a staff that didn't get along. And it was. A great thing to try and get them to work with each other because they just didn't like each other. But in the end, we tried to do some things together, we went to the first sale, we went to a few other things together. To try and build something that they got to enjoy too and they got. That's basically, in my book, it's a good way to handle things like that. And they get to know each other and they find out, you know, that the other person's not so bad.
What has been the highest pressure situation you have been under in recent years and how did you cope with it?
A friend died, I guess. And that's, that's the worst thing that's happened and then my aunt died and it it's been a regular thing. The last two years have been really, really rough, it seems like it all came together and my cousin died first and then. Then my aunt and then my friend. So, just now getting over where I wanna be around a lot of people. And I have a friend that's going through something similar as to what I did go through. She's having a problem and I, I'm so trying to help. And I don't know if I'm helping or not, I'm trying to.
I'm sure by being there for her, you are.
Why do you want to move to work here?
Well, actually, I need some money.
It always comes down to money.
Well, more than nine dollars an hour.
Yeah, I know.
But. I just need something to do too with my time. Being from Reno and Sparks, there's a lot of things you can go do and and I had a lot of friends, so I always. And I know a few people up here, I'm getting acquainted with even more. Working at the senior center was a very interesting thing and. I met a lot of people, most of them very, very nice and so, you know, it's just gonna take time to get to know.
Yeah.
And the last one is, do you have any questions of us?
Will you teach me how to use Zoom?
He will.
Listen, if I can learn how to use Zoom, you can learn.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's not.
No, it's, it's, yeah.
That's the same with me, if I could learn a community based.
Oh, and you did.
Yeah, a lot of meetings became Zoom meetings during the covid.
Yeah.
So, you know, some we did, you know, here, but a lot we did on our own.
And you could do it from your home.
Oh, sure, yeah, our phone, our computer.
Yeah, I did yesterday, attended a meeting from home on computer.
Is there anything else that you have any questions of us or when are you available?
Well, I just had my eyes done from cataracts two days ago and I'd like to to have at least a week.
Okay.
Before I can.
And you're no longer working at the senior center, okay, I wasn't sure that, okay. Any other questions?
I did actually have a whole bunch. The. If you have questions about me and how I do, or things I did through four H and campfire girls when I was junior. I had a a really active mom and she kept me busy. So between rodeo and and a few other things that, you know, kept out of trouble probably.
Do you have any concerns about doing the work or do you have any questions about the work?
I'd like, I'd like to go over and see exactly, I haven't been in the community center except a long time ago. We actually rented it or used it for the commission that I had. And at that time, I think I sent him down to the Capitol Cafe, it was open and. For his place to eat. But everything went really smooth there, but it was at that time, I don't know, I don't think that as many things in it as you do now. I get the idea.
It's gotten pretty busy.
Yeah.
And it goes and spurts, you know, different times of the year and stuff, so, okay, all right.
And do you have anyone that say how big, how much do you grant for?
That we have guidelines.
We have a guideline. You, you can learn that very easily.
And we have contracts, you know, that the people sign and fill out, you know, for the information, so everything's pretty standardized. And the rates are standardized and everything, so. And then if you have a question, the commissioner, one of the commissioners will be over the position. And and then as far as learning, we've got several individuals who've been pitching in, so they will help. With learning the different things.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you. And I believe we're going to make a decision hopefully today.
Yeah.
And then Karen will get back to us as possible, because that's always better to know and you don't have to worry.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, is she here? Yeah. Are you ready?
We may need like one to five.
That's all right.
Yeah, because there is no.
Yeah. Hello.
How are you? You can take your mask off.
So you're doing good today?
Yes.
So tell us about yourself.
So I'm Molly Hudson. And I just turned 26. I grew up here at graduate high school. I'm an aunt of many niece and nephews.
Okay, we have different questions, so we'll alternate asking the questions.
Okay.
What accomplishment are you most out of?
Graduating high school, eating my.
Yeah, you're still pretty young yet, so. Great, greater accomplishments are ahead.
What office and, or what computer and office skills do you have?
So Microsoft Excel, my current job, I deal with answering emails, making flyer, not really flyers, but like we have group areas that you can reserve, so I have to print out the name and hang those up for them. And laminator, we sometimes have to do stuff for that, faxing, all that.
Good.
This is a customer service facility, meaning the community center, and will require good customer service skills. Tell us about a situation where you demonstrated good communication and customer service skills.
So I work at Wright-Patch State Park and we deal with the public all the time. On the weekends, we open up our booth, then we have to deal with a lot of people coming in and then people coming up and wanting permits. So we have to deal with that. And then we do have some new people this year, so helping them train and then when they get busy, helping them. And then anybody in the park that has questions about park or wanting to pass or didn't get quite the right information from the other staff, then I fill in and help with that.
Have you ever had a situation where someone's upset and then you've had to work with them?
Um, I have and past, working out at Wright-Patch. I had a gentleman that didn't like to work with women.
Didn't like what?
Working with women.
Oh, okay.
And he was the only male. And so I talked with him and let him know what's going on and stuff. And if he rather work on certain projects by himself, then we just did that. If there was other projects he was able to work with us on, then we got that.
Throughout the year, there are several instances of large events at the community center. Back to back, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, especially during the holiday season. For example, we have Turkey Bingo, the, the hospital has long-term, long-term care party. We have a crab feed, Lincoln Day breakfast, those kinds of things. Multiple grad parties. How do you ensure that there is adequate staff for the cleaning and setup between these events? And how would you handle it if you have shortages of people to help?
Um, so if there's shortage, then I, I would help out as much as I can. I'd make sure whoever, the normal staff that would be helping the event, make sure they're going to be there on those dates. If not, then see if I can get some more staff depending who I hire up would be my boss that I would go talk to and see if we can have some other people come in and volunteer and help out with that.
This position also requires assisting with the setup and teardown after an event, which is usually after a back-to-back event like he was describing. Will you be able to move tables and chairs along with vacuuming, mopping, cleaning restrooms and windows by yourself after an event if that's needed?
Yes.
This position is not always an eight to five Monday through Friday job. You will be called, called or text by renters, staff, the sheriff's office, and others at all hours of the day with questions such as people unable to get in the building, cannot lock the doors, need a projector equipment, cleaning, et cetera. What will, or will that be a problem for you?
No, I actually work weekends now and holidays. I get a lot of people that know that I work out there and message me on Facebook asking, can we reserve this group area? I let them know while I'm off work. When I get in the next day, I'll give them a call and let them know on our schedule and if we have any openings.
How would you handle a confrontation with a person who is unhappy with a situation while renting the community center?
So I'll talk with them and figure out what exactly they're unhappy with. If it's something that I can't resolve, then I'll go to higher up. And if it is something that I can resolve, I'll mention it to higher up and see if there's something maybe we can change next time for them or.
Thank you.
Explain the importance of confidentiality in the workplace.
So I have actually dealt with that. I worked at the prison for a while, also keeping all the inmates' information that we see on our computer. It does not leave the workspace.
What has been the highest pressure situation you have been under in recent years? And how did you cope with it?
Um, so working out at the park, we deal with people that come in drunk, fights, all that kind of stuff. I've actually had to do a lot of statements that I've, what I witnessed and what all led up to it. I've actually had to go to court over something that happened beginning of last year.
Did it bother you at all?
No.
I mean, you obviously took care of.
Yeah.
Uh, why do you want to work here?
Um, great community. I grew up here, hope to raise a family here and being involved with everything, the kids, all their school events that they have, sports and everything.
Now, here's the most difficult question. Do you have any questions of us?
Um.
And take a minute. I got to catch up on my writing.
You're fine. I think I had one, but I forgot it.
When would you be available?
So that, um, I'd like to give me two weeks to my current job. I do have Mondays and Tuesdays off, so I can come in and start on my days off. On the 31st, I can't because it's the holiday, so I have to work that Monday. And then the first, I have to take my doctor to the vet. So those would be the only two days.
Anything else?
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
All right.
And we'll make, hopefully we'll make a decision today.
Okay.
So then Karen will let you know.
Okay. Um, I do go back to work, so I don't get service on the park. So if I don't answer, just, okay. Yeah.
Or a text.
Yeah.
All right.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. If I can tell you where I'm at on points.
Where are you on points? I haven't done points yet, but go ahead.
You have what?
I haven't.
Oh, you haven't done points.
Well, no, because I was writing.
Well, go for it.
No, no, that's okay. Tell me where you are on points.
I have 45 for the first one and 30 in the second. Did you do yours? What have you got to do?
Well, I can tell you without doing the points at this point, which I will do, but I was leaning towards the first one because she's more experienced. And, and I was hoping that she would be stable and available. The only issue I had, and it's not really an issue, is we have to be careful about what physical work that she.
The table.
Yeah, but that isn't all the time either. And, and if, if you're organized and if you are up on what needs to be done and communicate well with the custodian and everything, there won't be this many issues. And like some of the back-to-back, like in our case, when we have the Lincoln Day breakfast and it's right next to the crab feed, we come in that night when the crab feed and we work with them and vacuum and we do all kinds of stuff, so it's ready for us.
Yeah.
So communication is really important. I'm not sure why Molly left the prison, because that was on her.
Yeah. Was that like the park went to the prison doing that, the park? And I don't know.
Well, the park is, is probably a, a job where she's been able to do it.
Did you do points? Yeah, did you? You what?
So I mean, with, I mean, that's how I felt from the interview.
I did too. I felt the first one, Trudy was more experienced. You know, and I would say that, you know, she did work at the senior center driving the bus. She was very good working with the people there. Like she said, not all of them, or somehow she said that because a couple of the seniors were giving her a bad time. Anyway.
Oh, really?
Yeah, really?
I know of a few that that makes their day.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, okay, I don't have my points added yet, but that's what I'm thinking. So then do we need to come back and bring? Because we've got to do vouchers and then we also have to talk about the salarying office space, the equipment.
Right.
All that stuff, so.
So we.
No, it's okay. Go ahead. You, I, no, I'm fine. I don't need to, I'm good. You can, you can start the next. You have?
Yeah.
I have a number. You have it. 442-0292. I took, I took that off of our campaign. John.
I can't respond to my channel.
Okay, we can. We can come back at recess. Uh, the next item agenda is matters of the board for discussion.
I don't, um, water meeting on Friday. They're they're trying to look into cloud seeding in the Elko area.
That sounds familiar.
But they, they have a grant that will match it, but they have to come up with $60,000, so.
Is that with DRI?
Yeah, it's through DRI.
There was another group that could do it so much less expensively than DRI, back when we talked about it many years ago.
So. But all the equipment is already there and it's DRI, so. Other than that, pretty much not much going on. They're still protesting all the wells.
Good. As far as my stuff, I could report a little bit on senior center, what's a couple of things that have been going on there. Uh, one, the bus was damaged. We talked about that a little bit earlier today. The bus driver backed into a post at the clinic. Somebody, so they have to get, and it broke the window in the van, so we have to get that fixed. Uh, there was an employee leaving, has already given her two weeks' notice, and that's the assistant cook. So we have some issues, not only here, but coming down the road as far as cooking.
When, excuse me, when was Christie leaving?
She says in August.
Oh, okay. I thought it was May.
Kristi and I talked about that yesterday and we have to tire down to a date just because of trying to replace her. So we'll do there. That'll, that'll be done. Two other things. One is replacement of the condenser for the freezer, which we've talked about, we approved. It's going to be installed tomorrow. Anyway, so that's being done and that is covered under a grant. It's a grant that would pay.
That is great.
And I think you've heard me talk about there's printer issues. So that's an issue. Justin got us the, the model printer we need and is taking care of ordering that. We, through Rain, we know how we're going to pay for it. And then I was in a meeting yesterday with ADSD and I find out that we may be able to pay for that printer out of ADSD funds, so I'll, I'll keep on top of that. out of ADSD funds, so I'll, I'll keep on top of that and we'll see. To me, that's a good thing.
It's a very good thing. That's great.
Okay, public input. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. All the commentary will generally be limited to three minutes per person. Anybody on Zoom? No? Okay, nobody for public comment on Zoom or in the audience. We're down to approval of vouchers. Unless you want to go to the twenty-five.
It's up to you.
It's up to you.
Let's do approval of vouchers.
Okay.